Okay, we're good.
Good evening, everybody. On behalf of the members of the Planning Board and our professionals, I would like to welcome you to tonight's meeting of the Sparta Township Planning Board. Meeting is being held on August 20th, 2025 at the Sparta Municipal Building located at 65 Main Street in Sparta. Proceedings of the meeting are being livestreamed on YouTube at www.youtube.com/spartatwp. The time is 7:00 PM and the meeting is now called to order. Please note that no new business will be conducted after 9:30 PM and the meeting will end at 10:00. Join the board as we proudly pledge our allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, before the roll call, I just want to introduce the newest member of our Planning Board. It's Birgit Bogler and she is going to be sworn in today by Mr. Poro before we do the roll call.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
Thank you.
And that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in the state under the authority of the people?
Yes, I do.
And that you will faithfully and partially and justly perform all the duties of the Sparta Township Planning Board as a member according to the best of your abilities?
I will.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Just for the record, Ms. Bogler has already signed the oath of office and it is duly notarized and it's in order. Dory, you have a copy of that?
I do, I have the original here.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, roll call please.
Jeanette Burke, here. Ernie Reigstad?
Here.
Brian Zimmerman?
Here.
Ron Day?
Here.
Chairwoman Joan Furman?
Here.
Councilman Mark Scott?
Here.
Birgit Bogler?
Here.
Vice Chairman Robert Otto?
Here.
Celeste Luciano?
Here.
Christine Dunbar.
All right, first thing we have coming up are the approval of minutes. Some of these are from 2023 and 2024. So the members who are eligible to vote on some of these minutes are quite limited. The first one I have is the May 3rd, 2023 minutes. And the only members eligible to vote, eligible to vote are Ernie, Jeanette, and Ron. So would one of the three of you make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, and is there any discussion on the minutes? Dory, would you do the roll call, please?
Ernie Reigstad?
Yes.
Jeanette Burke?
Yes.
Ron Day?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next is May 17th, 2023, eligible to vote, Jeanette, Ron, Christine, Celeste, and Ernie. Which one of those persons named be making a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, roll, any discussion?
I have some discussion on this one.
Okay.
Just going through it, I think there's a couple typos and some blanks in here I think that need to be filled in. For instance, if I look at page one, the second to last paragraph mentions a Mike Mistrata. It should have been Mike Mistrata.
Ron, if you don't mind me interrupting, I believe you're looking at the copy that I had sent initially?
Yeah.
So that was for content only because I hadn't had a chance to...
Was the new one sent?
Yes.
When?
Today, but it's in your packet as well.
I didn't have a chance to look at my packet, I forgot.
Yeah, but that was corrected, we put Mike Mistrata in there. But if you want to continue, of course, I'll tell you what's been corrected.
And the same thing on page two, was that corrected? There's a blank there?
Mike Mistrata, yes, it's been corrected.
And then halfway in the middle of the page where it talks, starts, Ms. Dunbar asked... No, no, it's okay, it's okay. On page four, there's a blank for Mr. Mistrata? Was his name filled in there?
Yeah, that was filled in, correct.
On page, I guess two paragraphs down, there's a couple blanks. I don't know whose name goes in there?
Are we still on page...
With a blank?
Page four, I'm sorry, are we still on page four?
Yeah, Sean Sealy of Sparta Approach, start with that paragraph. So if you go to page four on top where it starts, Kathy Ebning, Ebningson?
It may have been Mr. Mistrata again said that he did not have a traffic study in front of him?
I don't know, that was my problem.
But is that the spot that has the blank on your sheet?
Yes.
Then that was filled in with Mr. Mistrata.
Okay, and that sentence, so both paragraphs there are Mr. Mistrata?
Correct.
Okay, great. Then on the next page is two more blanks. Motion was made by and seconded by with those names filled in?
That was filled in.
Well, for the record, what are they?
Just give me the paragraph and I'll tell you specifically. It's in the new copy that you have.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to look at it.
But, no, I'm sorry, I was answering Joan.
Cut off from me to be able to look at things on a day of the meeting.
What page?
Page five.
What paragraph?
Is that to go into executive session?
Let's see. So on page five, it's a paragraph above says, "Mr. Collins crafted a resolution to go into executive..." Yes, and the motion was made by and it says blank?
Motion made by Peter Ski, seconded by Bill Enright.
Yes, that was filled in.
Great. And then on the last page, that was filled in? The final sentence, Chairman?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
I noticed something, even though I can't vote. Just Vivian Perlmutter is P-E-R-L, no, P-E-A-R-L. So if you want to correct that?
I will correct that. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Jeanette Burke?
Yes.
Ron Day? Celeste Luciano?
Yes.
Ernie Reigstad?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. What was that? April 3rd, eligible to vote, Jeanette, Ron, Celeste, and Christine, who's not here. So it would be Jeanette, Ron, and Celeste. Would one of you three make a motion to approve the April 3rd, 2024 minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on the April 3rd minutes? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Jeanette Burke?
Yes.
Ron Day?
Yes.
Celeste Luciano?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is April 17th, 2024, eligible to vote, Ernie, Ron, myself, Jeanette, and Christine. Would somebody make a motion for April 17th?
I'll make a motion.
You're second.
I'll second, Jeanette.
Okay, I have some corrections on that one. If you go to the second page, the fourth paragraph, it says Chairman Day asks Mr. Collins for his report. Mr. Collins referred to his report dated da-da-da-da-da. Mr. Collins was not the witness, he was not the one speaking, I don't know who was. But that has to be corrected.
If it helps, I went back to look at the tape.
Okay.
And I think everything in this paragraph that mentions Mr. Collins should be Mr. Simmons.
Simmons? Okay.
Dave, what this was about was about your questioning about your engineering report. And the same thing in the following paragraph where it talks about, "Ask for the records of the ceiling of the well," that's also Mr. Simmons, which I verified on the thing today.
Thank you. All right, and then the other thing that I had was the very end where it was the last vote. Ms. Luciano made the motion and was seconded by Ms. Burke. It has me down as a no, I was a yes. That's all I have, does anybody else have anything on these minutes?
I had one other thing on page four. In the middle of the page where, under other board business, it talks about the red line version being attached to the minutes. So it looks like there's an action that has to happen there. I just recommend we take that out and just, it's included as part of the minutes.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Included as, you know, just as a separate attachment.
Okay, anything else? All right, roll call, Dory?
Ernie Reigstad?
Yes.
Ron Day?
Yes.
Joan Furman?
Yes.
Jeanette Burke?
Yes.
Okay, last we have the May 1st, 2024, eligible to vote, Ernie, Joan, and Brian. Would somebody make a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
You're second?
I'll second it.
Okay. I had a few changes on this which I gave to Dory and I believe they're changed on the minutes that are now before us?
Correct.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything? Okay, and roll call?
Ernie Reigstad?
Yes.
Joan Furman?
Yes.
Brian Zimmerman?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everybody, got through the minutes.
Before we go any further, I want to make a statement.
Yes.
We left the last meeting and we all agreed to get along, move forward, and put our swords down. And I feel like that never happened. I feel like it actually just escalated. So I'm going to make a motion to vacate the chair.
I'll second.
Yes.
Again, just from a, I wasn't at the last meeting and the... It's interesting enough in that when you, at the reorganization in January, appoint a chairperson, it is normal that that person continues through the cycle, is it a vested or not? To be candid with you, in my 34 years, I've never seen the chairperson being challenged and this is a second challenge within the last month or so. And I respect as board members, you have the right to these procedural issues. Again, it's unusual. I don't believe that the chairperson has a vested right to it if you don't have the faith in the chairperson. We are in August, you do have a reorganization in January. So again, just from my legal perspective, I believe you have the right to do it. Whether it, in your discussion, I think the message has been loud and clear and you had to vote last month, so I would just leave it at that. I'm very proud to be a part of this board, you have so many great things that you're doing. We have a nice application tonight on the school. We have some discussion on some other ancillary issues. I did give in your package the power of the Planning Board because we have a new member. And again, I see a lot of positive things, so I wish everyone the best, that's it, thank you.
I want to add a point to discussion. I think, I don't know if we, can I ask that we go into executive session for this? I don't...
I don't think that's...
No?
It's, you know, if, if there's no disparaging statements, it's just a vote of confidence. I would ask to keep it at that and you're in discussion, you can have discussions. If there's an issue that someone feels is going to lead to litigation, then that's a different issue, but I represent the board, not the individuals. So therefore, from a board perspective, a board member has made a motion, it's been seconded and you're discussing and that's within your power.
Just...
I haven't heard a second, but I would like to know what has changed since the last boarding to now, last meeting to now that has...
Actually, Jeanette did second.
Okay, I think it should be on the public record because I don't know what's happened. We didn't have a meeting since the last meeting.
Ron, sorry to put you on the spot. Do you, do you think there was one, a couple caveats to whether we should go into executive session? There's a legal consideration possibly? Yeah. Can I, can I just...
One comment I will make is, we had the meeting, our last meeting, and the vote, and it was just a slim majority recognized it, but the vote was to get, we came up with some recommendations and to give time for that to happen. So I don't know what's happening in the meantime, so I don't know...
Nothing.
What I, what I would need, I would need to know what's changed to change my vote. Otherwise, I think I'm going to stay with where it was.
Can I ask, can I ask Ron something and legal? If we're not going executive, can I just have a quick word? Is that done?
Again, I represent the board that if there has been a motion, there's a discussion. If, and I would, the chairperson is asked for some basis, I think that's a fair question. And that's where you are, you're in discussion right now. If I could make a suggestion, maybe we get through the application, the applicant, because to have a new chair tonight, assuming the vote went one way, I think then the vice chair would be Rob Otto would be the vice chair. Where, again, that the vote would just be, if this discussion carried until after the applicant, because this may go on for a little bit, if that's okay? Brian with... So that's my recommendation to board, let's have the application first, let the chairperson complete it and then maybe we will go into closed session on it. But as of right now...
Is there a legal recourse for being capable of going to closed session once there's a motion and a second? I mean, doesn't that vote have to happen before a closed session can happen?
Well, I just heard Brian say fine.
No, no, Brian said fine until after the application. My question is, can, can we just arbitrarily go into a closed session before a vote happens?
We are not arbitrarily going into a closed session, to be very candid with you. I've never seen this in my professional career. I'm a land use attorney of some 30 years. If I was the chairperson, I would have pause and I would have litigation concerns. So that is the basis we would go into closed session. If there is litigation concerns as a board, because I represent the board. So what I'm strongly recommending to you is that this matter, this issue be just tabled for a short period of time until after this application, because what you're going to create then, assuming the vote goes one way, we have no chairperson. I'm not sure you can agree on a replacement chairperson. So again, I think it's unfair to the applicant and the public that, that we, we go through this right now. I would strongly recommend that we go through the applicant, I think, Brian, is that okay? And then the second...
I wasn't disagreeing with that.
Okay. Okay, thank you, if that's okay, board?
All right, thank you. With that, I'd like to welcome the Sparta Board of Education. They're ready at the dais and I just want to mention that we are hearing about the Alpine Elementary School. There is a referendum that is coming up. This is only one portion of the referendum. So we are not hearing about the high school, the middle school, or any of the other schools. It is strictly the capital improvement plan. We will not vote our approval on it, we will just recognize our endorsement or so of the project because we don't have the ultimate authority to do that. So we welcome you to make a presentation and we'd love to hear all about the school.
And just real quickly for the record, as the chairperson had said, if you look in the Cox COX Law Treatise on page 214, it says, "With specific regard to a Board of Education building proposal submitted to the Planning Board pursuant to New Jersey Statute 40,55D-31A and NJSA 18A-18A-16, the Board's role is strictly recommend, recommendations, recommendatory." And that's the Murdick, M-U-R-N-I-C-K, Murnick versus Board of Education case, New Jersey appellate case from 1989, 235 NJ Super 255. Again, obviously, board, if you have site plan issues, my experience has been that the applicant will look to it. But again, we're making recommendations and normally what we do is, which we did on the storm issue, one of the other resolutions, we look to our professionals, our engineer, our planner. And my experience again has been that those are well received, so that's all I have, thank you.
Good. Do I hit the button or just talk? We're good?
Because they have to introduce themselves, do they have to get sworn in then because they are...
We'll let the attorney go first.
Well, I'm just, so, I just wanted to thank you, board members, for having us tonight and introduce myself. My name is Joe Roselli, I'm the attorney for the Board of Education, it's R-O-S-E-L-L-E. And, you know, I'm here with the district's architect, Alan Barnett. And we're here, as the chair and Mr. Poro said, for a courtesy review of the plans for Alpine Elementary School, which is a part of the referendum that's coming up in September. There are obviously going to be many more projects related to that referendum that will also come through. And we're actually at a preliminary stage right now with this review and with the entire project because we don't know if it's going to move forward or not until the vote for the referendum. But some of the things that we have to do on our end with the state and getting approval and everything requires us to come here tonight to meet those timelines. So I'm here on the legal end, but I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Barnett to kind of give a overview of the project and answer any questions that you or the engineers may have while we move forward. So Alan, I'll turn it over to you, give an overview.
Alan, would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, self-evident?
I do.
Name and business address for the record.
Sure, my name is Alan Barnett, Principal and President of the Carabino Architects, 35 Waterview Boulevard, Suite 305, Parsippany, New Jersey.
And Mr. Barnett, you have, you hold a license in architecture?
Yes, sir.
And you're licensed in good standing to say New Jersey?
Yes, sir.
Have you been accepted as an expert in other jurisdictions?
Yes, sir.
Board, I'd recommend you accept Mr. Barnett as an expert in the area of architecture.
So accepted.
Thank you. You have the black and white hard copies that were given to you as part of the submission? What your screen, do they have color? They'll take the exact...
Yes.
Color versions, I thought it'd be a little easier for you to follow along with the color versions. I'll have those here, a little easier since I like to follow your hands and fingers. Laser pointers don't really work on your monitors, so I'm going to talk and you can follow along on your monitors what is shown on your screens. So as we stated earlier, this project, we're really still in the prelim stages. Three weeks out, we're about three weeks out from a referendum vote that the district is asking the taxpayers of Sparta to vote on. It is, Alpine School is one piece of it, each school is going to get something. The Alpine piece is the only piece that is a building addition, so that's really the only piece that has to come. All the others are facility improvements and interior renovations. The planning board really does not...
May I ask that you use a mic, please, for the people at home in the recording?
Or this, which one?
If you're going to stand in front of it, then it has to be the remote.
Okay, we good?
Thank you.
Much louder now. So as I was saying, the Alpine School addition and renovations is one part of it. Each of the schools is going to receive some work as part of the referendum. I know the engineers all looked at the project, we're very preliminary at this point, right? We're still, I like to call it flying at the 30,000-foot mark. Until we get, until we get that, that vote of approval on September 16th, September 17th, I start the final approach to land in Sparta. So we will gladly come back, meet with authorities having jurisdiction, meet with the plane, meet with the police department, the fire department, the Neglia Engineering, and Mr. Simmons? Meet with Mr. Simmons and make sure we cover all the pieces that they have. At this point in time, the Board of Education, we don't charge the Board of Education with that extra cost of doing a lot of the upfront engineering work if the project is not going to move forward. So we will come back, I have some of the comments that I'm able to address tonight, but some of it won't be able to be addressed until we know we have a project moving forward. So with that being said, I'm going to talk about Alpine addition. It's a 46,625 square foot addition, two stories. That's going to, that's going to encompass 20 classrooms, 10 on the first floor, which are going to be kindergarten classrooms, 10 on the second floor, which are going to be second grade, as of right now, they're earmarked for second grade classrooms. There are associated offices, support facilities, bathrooms, a gymnasium off to the one side and connecting link back to the existing building. So you'll be able to flow internally throughout the entire facility now, where before it was just through here or you made some exterior connections. So you'll be able to, we've cited this so that you can connect back into and, and use the balance of the, of the facility. The building is situated in such a way, right now, they have the existing bus parking back here. We've put the building in where that bus parking is and we've now put to the plan left, a new 21 space bus drop-off parking lot. And on the plan right, a new 52 spit parking, space parking lot, which will allow this gymnasium to be used, well, during the day, the parking will be used for teachers, but in the nights and evenings, the gym is designed in such a manner that we can close the building down from the rest, the gymnasium down from the rest of the building and be able to be used during the off-hours for community functions. The site, as I said, we're relocating the bus drop-off from this area off to the plan left. We're allowing a better circulation of bus and, and parent drop-off. Right now, they currently come, circulate and come back through. Right now, with the proposed, the buses will come in, queue here, and then come right back out through so that the, the merge point will be here and off, off the site that way. We are providing an additional, as I stated, additional 52 spaces back here, 19 spaces along here, and then we're picking up 28 spaces where they have currently grass islands. So we'll be picking that up as impervious as well. Let's see, off to the plan north, there are wetlands, we've taken that into consideration and we've delineated where the, the buffer area is and we are not impeding into that. Should the project move forward, we'll work with the DEP just to confirm that we are not, there are no ramifications there. Utilities, we're going to be connecting to the existing. As, again, as we move forward, we know we need the electrical service upgrade because the existing Alpine service is maxed out right now, we know we need that. We'll also look at water and sewer. The storm, the intention is that the storm will be focused primarily under the bus, bus parking. But again, as the project moves forward, the civil engineer will come on board, we'll, we'll meet with Neglia Engineering and we'll get those, make sure we meet the standards of the Sparta Township. Can we go to... Can we go to the next one? Thank you. So this just gives you a little bit of a larger view of what the proposed addition will be. So as again, as I said, bus drop-off, we'll have on the left-hand side of the plan, we're going to have a plaza, a drop-off plaza for the kids to stage before they make their way into the building through the various entry points. This would be a new entry point here for the students that would come in off the buses and then they would filter down through the existing, the existing building. Kindergarten wing on the first floor, we have the 10 classrooms, associated offices, toilet facilities, stairs, elevator, gymnasium, and again, that connecting link back into the, back into the existing building. Let me go to the next. And I think at that point, I'm going to drop this down. So when we look at the elevation, this is a concept rendering of what, what we, we would hope the building looks like should the referendum pass, utilizing brick, metal panels at this point, metal panels and glass. Creating, this is, this is what you would see from that bus drop-off parking lot. So as the buses come in, you have this open and inviting two-story stair element. You have the kindergarten on that first floor and then up on the second floor, you'd have the academic classrooms for the second grade. Students would make their way through the, the entry at the stair or at the entry at the end of the hallway, make their way up through the stair and down through and down through the building. Again, the use of brick, metal panel, and glass and create an open, inviting campus feel for the district with this entry plaza, this, excuse me, not entry plaza, but this gathering plaza staging area for the buses. And then if you can go to the last rendering? This is the other side of the building where we have the, the gymnasium. So this is a view from that new proposed parking lot with the gymnasium entrance that can be used not just for teachers entrances, but as well as for weekends and evenings for the community functions. This would be a view of the, of the gymnasium. Again, the use of brick, metal panels, we would probably do a standing seam roof on the barrel vault, glass. This is showing the connecting link back to it, open, inviting so that you, so that you make that nice connection back to the existing. Some of the renovations that are going to occur, you could go back to images. Nope, too far, down. Some of the renovations that are going to occur in the existing building, two of the kindergarten class, current kindergarten classrooms are going to be renovated to have ADA toilets. Uh, then two classrooms are gonna be renovated to bring specials off the cart. So, what happens currently is art and music are done really on a cart. So, the teacher wheels around the music instruments and he wheels around the art supplies. They need, the, the district needed to do that because they needed the space. So, this, providing this addition is gonna give them those spaces back so that teachers get dedicated spaces back for art and music. Some of the other pieces, uh, the existing trailers that are, let me go back. The existing trailers that are here, they are gonna stay, but they are gonna be repurposed as offices and storage. Some of the other projects that are gonna occur in the building, but really have no, no, um, impact on the, from a planning board standpoint, windows and door replacement, roof replacement, classroom HVAC, uh, electrical service upgrade, which I mentioned earlier, which would be required for not just the HVAC upgrades, but also for the building addition and a boiler replacement. Uh, there was a comment in one of the reports on the schedule. Should the referendum pass in September, we're gonna work really hard and get the construction documents done so that July of twenty-six, we can start to have a shovel in the ground so that come July of twenty-eight, we're ready for, to turn the building over to the school board. And so, they're ready for the September twenty-eight, twenty-nine academic year. Then, uh, lastly, again, as I stated at the beginning, should this referendum pass, we'll gladly come back, myself and my team, we'll gladly come back and work with, work with the planning board and work with, uh, all the authorities having jurisdiction and make sure all your, all your, um, comments are met and your recommendations are met. And with that, that's, that's Alpine's addition.
So, we'll take any questions or comments that?
Yeah, first we'll go to our professionals, um, and I'm not sure who would like to go first, you two can duke it out. Mister Simmons?
No problem. Uh, just for the record, uh, report that I prepared dated August twentieth, twenty twenty-five, the architect went through several of the comments and concerns that I mentioned, but I'll just hit a few of them highlighted. Uh, I realize this plan is general in nature, but I wanted to bring up several items that I thought would be good for the board to consider and also, uh, the applicant. On page two, under item three, site plan, uh, they did talk about the estimated timeframe just now as far as if the project moves forward, what's involved. One thing that I know they indicated they would take into consideration were the comments from, uh, the emergency services and what have you with regards to the loop road. I know with the plan that I'm looking at right now, with the proposed addition and what have you, they've changed the circulation, there's circulation involved with the buses going around and it doesn't show up in the text on the screen we're looking at, but I did note that they were proposing widening of the various access drives, so they did have the ability to have two-way circulation as is shown on the plan. What's eliminated is basically where the tree plaza is and the, uh, proposed addition to the school, that's where the connection would have been for the loop around in the back of the school. So, that's something, if it goes forward, they may wanna talk to the emergency services on. Uh, with regards to lighting, uh, again, realizing this is a preliminary conceptual plan, uh, the one thing I just wanted the applicant to, uh, be aware of, I know lighting is always a big concern with the board, uh, for sky glow and that type of thing. And when the lighting plan, if it goes forward, is designed, uh, they could keep that, that in mind as far as minimizing lights, as they say, less is more sometimes, especially with the residential areas around. That's something I thought would be a good thing. Uh, with regards to stormwater management, I looked at it and it was helpful to have the, uh, transition area that was assumed to be a hundred and fifty feet shown on the plan and how you basically stayed out of that transition area. And just before the application started, the planner and I were discussing one possible way to mitigate it would be underground pipes and what have you under the parking lot area. Just so the, the applicant, the board is aware, uh, periodically, the DEP for stormwater regulations will audit a municipality and a few years ago, Sparta was audited. And at random, they took a couple of the commercial sites, for example, just up the street here on Main Street and over off Wilson Drive, and they double-checked to make sure that when the applications were being reviewed, that the stormwater regulations were being adhered to and met. So, we're kinda sensitive to that from the standpoint, we've already been visited once, we passed, no problem. But I didn't want you to get a false sense of security about that either, so I just wanted you to understand where we're coming from.
Once the civil engineer gets on board, we'll work out the stormwater management plan and have that for review.
Good, thank you. Uh, with regards to utilities, again, I know they're served with township water. Uh, I know Mister Corey Long, the utilities director, did mention that he was concerned that there would probably have to be a relocation of the existing water main so it wasn't underneath another building or some other infrastructure and again, would have to look at what the fire flow requirements and what, however you are in that area.
That's correct.
Uh, with regards to the septic system, I understand you're going to propose to tie this new addition into the, uh, existing plant. Whether that has the capacity, we'll need some upgrades as well, I don't know. I'm not sure if you know at this point or not.
Believe early on, we were told that it has the capacity, but we would, that would be double-checked.
Okay, so that's one issue. Uh, as far as power goes, you mentioned that the power was already maxed out, so there'll have to be additional power brought in. With regards to the architectural plans for the, uh, exterior treatment, again, thank you for providing those slides tonight to give the board a perspective of what the intent for the school addition is to look like. And I know over the years, there's been some, uh, submissions to the board for solar panels, uh, be they ground-mounted or building-mounted on the roof. I didn't know if there was any intent for that, for this project or not.
At this point in time, no.
Would the roof of the addition be designed for it structurally?
Uh, that would be up to the discussion with the board. If the board thinks that they may entertain solar panels, then yes, it would be designed for that.
Okay. And with regards to the elevator and what have you, I, I don't know, is there an emergency generator at the school right now?
I don't believe so, I don't believe.
Would there be one proposed for this addition?
Believe it's, isn't it, I think it's required when you put the elevator in, so it, it would be. And it would, and we would work with the district as to what they choose to put on it, whether it's just life safety or it's, it's more.
Okay. Uh, I didn't see any change in the signage, so. Uh, with regards on page four, the environmental impact statement, uh, there was nothing provided at this conceptual stage. But again, as the architect indicated, they are going to visit with DEP to verify that their line and transition area width that they've shown is correct. That's my understanding.
That's correct.
Okay. And then I just on, finally, on a miscellaneous, uh, listed the various agencies that I thought would have some jurisdiction. There may be some others with the State Board of Education. And as usual, what we recommend, that if the project moves forward and is approved, that upon completion and as built, be provided of all the utility infrastructure especially and all the other infrastructure involved with a project, so the township has that on file just for future use if there's any other expansion.
I think that's a great idea. I think that's a great idea.
And that's my comments at this point, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Miss Knight?
Um, seeing as this is just very much preliminary, uh, most of my comments are kinda just gonna be food for thought for future submission if the referendum was to go through. Um, the first being, um, during a presentation in the future, potentially showing the increase in employees and the ways that the increase employee, increase in employees and parking might change or obviously you have a lot of parking on site, so parking should not be an issue, but just having those numbers there, um, would be important. And then I think some kind of circulation plan, not just showing the buses, but during kind of like the peak hours of the school for drop-off and pickup, um, specifically back out onto Andover Road, I think would be helpful for the board as well to see, um, kind of the traffic patterns as well. But that is it.
Thank you.
If I, if I could just quickly, uh, David Lindsay, as far as we're seeing in other communities, security, uh, and I do see have one common entrance, which is commendable, uh, any issue on the evolution of security at schools, you know, uh, is there now an area?
Well, we have to, we, as, as school architects, we have to follow the Department of Education's best practices, so. We probably didn't put it on the rendering, cuz nobody really likes to look at bollards. So, there would be bollards along here that, again, for vehicular and there would be bollards. There would be bollards along this walk as well, from a vehicular standpoint. The, the entrances would be. I think they're called, they're, well, we don't really call it, nobody likes to call them mantraps, but, yeah. Uh, enclosures, security enclosures, security vestibules, they would be incorporated in the design as well.
That's all, uh, thank you, appreciate it.
There's a whole other list of things that we could get into for best practices, but.
Uh, then, uh, just for the record, uh, we have submittals, uh, from the tax assessor, having no comment. Uh, that's unusual because property is tax exempt, it's owned by, uh, government. Uh, the next one was from, uh, Richard Smith Traffic Bureau of June nineteenth. He had some comments, uh, should bring to your attention, I think the, uh, board engineer made reference to. We also have, uh, some comments from the fire prevention, uh, Thomas McGintry, uh, of June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. And I think the, uh, board engineer also made reference to that, but if you could keep that in your sights. We also have, um, a letter from Jennifer, uh, Shortino, Director of Health and, uh, Human Services with regard to the project and just her concern on food and the like, if you can, uh, just keep that in mind. And then we have, um, as was mentioned by the board engineer, Corey Long is to the utilities and that's all part of the record. Were you, counsel, were you given copies of those? If not, we'll make sure you get them.
Actually, those, I say, those, those didn't cross my desk, so I was gonna follow up with my staff tomorrow to see.
The only, the only comments we have are from Corey Long, the other ones I, we haven't heard.
I actually have an extra copy of those, uh, that I made reference to. So, as a courtesy, I'll just give, uh, all those to you.
Thank you.
Let me make sure I got everything I mentioned. Yes.
You can also check with Mister Ayers.
Yeah, okay.
Well, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Good, be well. I have nothing further, thank you.
Hey, anybody from the dais?
I've got a, I've got a couple of questions. First of all, thank you for coming to us tonight and give us the chance to look at this preliminary, preliminarily. Going through the package, I did have some issues not recognized and it wasn't preliminary, I think that satisfies it a little bit more. But there was a lot of questions, you know, had this been an, um, a commercial applicant, I probably, I'd have a hard time going forward with this. Um, I'll give you, uh, the big example is I think in the application, you say no variances are required. But the package itself didn't address that. There were no block standard tables that I saw, design standard tables said, this is requirement, this is what we're doing. And that would relate to things like the building height, impervious coverage, off-street parking, you're adding a lot of, um, spaces. But, you know, as a conditional use for schools, there's a calculation that's needed to say, based on what we're building, this is the number that are needed. So, what is that number and how does that compare to what's being added? The benches, the parking spaces, you know, I, I think we're all concerned with safety of the kids. There was no dimensions for the sidewalks or anything like that, so. I, I just bottom line is, I'm not sure if we're gonna get another bite at the apple here, but I think these are things that need to be looked at to assure there are no variances and ask, you know, that you, that you guys look at that, you know, very carefully.
Yeah, we'll do.
Other question, did the environmental commission have a chance to look at this and did they comment? I didn't see anything.
Yes. We did.
You did, with any comments?
There was a lot of discussion about the ADA compliance, which was interesting, um, but we addressed that and, uh, I think there was questions about the tree line, uh, there wasn't questions about the rear access. Um, I have that question. There was concern about, again, it was on environmental, but I'm not really sure, widening the road, um, concerns with pre-existing traffic flow, um, but again, that's kinda beyond the scope, but that's kinda echoing the same concerns.
So, so if there was a memo, I, I think it'd be helpful if we could get it to, to, to the folks here so they can see what the comments were and, and possibly address them. I think Dave talked about that, you know, a lot of, there's a lot of new parking areas going, so, and new building surface, so you addressed the stormwater already. And I guess the last thing I have is, um, I believe it was the fire department and the police department talked about a rear access road. So, I don't know if you've had a chance to think about that or, or if you wanna think about some more.
Yeah, we'll think, we'll definitely take that into consideration. This is, unfortunately, this is the first time I've seen that letter, so.
Okay.
So, so we will take that into consideration and we will, as I stated earlier, we will meet with the various, uh, police chief and fire chief.
Okay, so, so would the intent be to come back to the board, come back to the professionals? What, what would be the next step?
Well, the, uh, the next step would be to come back to the professionals.
Okay.
Okay, this is, uh, well, you wanted to talk.
Yeah, so, this project is a, it's a courtesy review because this, this school district's not subject to approval, but we're happy to provide any information just for informational purposes that you're looking for.
Okay.
We'll work with anybody that we need to, we wanna get this passed.
So, so the big thing is just making sure, again, showing the evidence that there were no variances required in the areas that we talked about.
Okay, understood.
Thank you.
I just have a, a question regarding the parking area. Was any thought given to perhaps putting, um, solar panels above the parking spots?
At this point in time, we did not consider solar over the parking or on the building. If, if the, and it's not been factored into the referendum.
It's not, okay.
Anybody else?
Yeah, um, I mean, in addition to solar, uh, something that also came up with environmental was wind generation, just, some small units or, you know. But, uh, in regards to the rear access for emergency, I guess I would just say, when you have that conversation, be mindful of there's a lot of impervious on here. I don't know, uh, what that would look like. It looks to me like it's a pretty tough path if you go from the back rear, uh, car parking area past along the tree line through the wetlands into the waste treatment, you know, to the bus.
Where I'd wanna talk to the, to the police and fire, because if you put the part, if you put the, the, the loop road right up against the building, you're technically in the collapse zone of the building.
Yeah.
So, I'd wanna work with them to see what they would, what, what they would like and what we can provide for them.
So, with the engineer, I, I don't know if Dave maybe could just provide any insight as far as, is there like, not, not a temporary, but something that would work, that would be pervious? I know pervious pavers aren't the answer here, but if they could even go through that wetlands area in an emergency?
Well, the, can you go to the first slide? So, yeah.
That tree line, if you, can you scroll up to show the rear?
That's, that's the extent of.
The image?
No, that goes up, goes up a little bit more.
See on the right there, Dory?
So, you've got the, you've got the, the, the line, the delineation here of the wetland buffer?
Yeah.
If we were to connect this to this, we'd have to really play with the, I'm sorry to have my back there.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that, I was just wondering if you, but you, you, you're saying you can't get in that wetlands at all with any kind of, I mean.
We'd have to study that, you know, there's.
That's a state involved?
What is it, the geo, the geo block that you can drive over, there's, there's, um, uh, and then we've done, we've done projects where we've used pervious paving.
Yeah.
Actual pervious asphalt paving, so there are things that we can do to meet the stormwater.
I don't even know if the state would allow it, but that's why I was curious.
Well, one, one thing right now, the way they've got it shown on the slide you're all looking at, they've basically stayed out of the transition area.
Yeah.
So, they don't need any DEP permits, at least as far as what we're aware of.
If there was an access road.
Right, but if, but just looking at it, there are things that they might be able to consider. For example, there's, uh, transition area averaging, for example, where the gymnasium is and the basketball court, I believe it is, that's a couple of the closest points to the wetland buffer. And then over on the, uh, kindergarten playgrounds, there's a bigger distance, a longer distance to the transition area. What they could do is, uh, increase the ability to go where the basketball court is by taking some of that buffer off and adding it over by the, by one of the playground areas.
Okay.
It's a balancing act you could do. The downside of that is. The downside of that is, they, that involves another DEP permit that they'd have to do, but I'm, I'm not gonna say it's impossible to do. And they do make like a turf block that you can put in, that, uh, will, basically grass will grow up through it. But it's basically grass impermeable. The only down, and it'll support, depending on the bedding you use, larger weight trucks like a fire truck. The, the one thing you have to be cognizant of, uh, where you run into a problem with that sometimes, is wintertime maintenance with snow. If you're plowing that, uh, you have to have a, a maintenance department that understands that's what you're plowing on. You have to treat it carefully so you don't destroy it and dig it up. Those are just a couple ideas.
But if the, if the basketball court were shifted behind the playground, is that even an option that you guys might consider? Because then that would potentially free up.
Well, like, like I said, we'll definitely sit down and, and, and do what we can to accommodate the, and, and, Mr. Simmons, right, Mr. Simmons?
Yep.
Uh, as Mr. Simmons said, that once the civil engineer gets on board, then we'll start talking with the DEP as to what the trade-offs can and can't be.
And also, the buffers, I'm sure, are probably also preliminary, you haven't confirmed the location of the buffers.
We brought a civil engineer in very early on, just to say, hey, where's the wetlands, and then what's the setbacks off of those?
Sure.
So they have not been.
Fully confirmed that, yeah, so that's the other item as well, right, so those are, this is still so preliminary.
So if you, if you've noticed that I gave myself some, some room.
Yeah, and they recently changed as well, so.
Increased or decreased?
Increased.
Thank you.
I don't think, I don't think they're gonna decrease them.
Ever, it's like taxes, they always go up.
Yes, sir.
Oh, sorry.
How many additional students will this building or this renovation be able to accommodate?
It actually takes the students that, there's, the students that are currently in the building, and relocates them. It gets them out of the trailers into the, into the, um, into the addition, and it re-shuffles some students that are in the balance of the building up. But it does project out for some growth in the town.
Okay, because there is an amazing amount of pressure on this town to grow, as you may or may not be well aware. There are, uh, you know, we have a COA obligation, we have, uh, multifamily units that are pressured to go in, I mean, we are, you know, court cases away from, you know, thousands, thousands of additional people in this town.
Right, we understand that.
Almost, almost three to four thousand.
This is based.
Therefore, another thousand or two children, and, you know, this is, how are we gonna accommodate the next school? The next facility, I mean, is this gonna help us? Or, or are we, why are we, why is this not being, why isn't this double or triple the size to accommodate growth?
Okay, that gets into a conversation about what the Department of Education will accept, and what they'll provide state aid for. But there was a, there was a, a demographic study that was completed by the district, I believe it was completed twice. That's what the state accepts for, for projected growth. So if those projects are not currently in, or the students, it's a projected out, it can only, the, the state, the state engineers will only accept five years. Five years of, of demographics, after that, the, the students aren't born, or they're not in, you know, they can't project who's gonna move into the community. They can project and work with, the, the demog, demographer works with the planning board to find out what's in the pipeline, but if it's not an approved project, they can't take that into consideration. So all that goes into, into consideration when we, when we work out the design, and what we submit to the state, because the state will only approve state aid for projects that the demographer can justify, and the numbers that the demographer can justify, and that's only for five years. After that, they say the kids aren't born yet, which makes sense, right? If you're, if, if you're looking at what's coming into a school system. So to get, so the state will allow you to build whatever, is what they won't give you in state aid, is really what it comes down to, because you have to be able to justify it. So if, but we don't know what's ultimately coming for Sparta, correct? We know there's intentions for Sparta, but we don't know what's truly coming. Each of the buildings have spare capacity, based on the functional capacity standards that's been determined by the, the Department of Education, so they can absorb, and this would allow also for spare capacity to allow to absorb.
I know you're asking the voters for some fifty-five million, I believe it is, how much state aid will be coming this way?
Sixteen point nine million.
Sixteen point nine mil, so that's thirty percent, is what you're saying?
Uh, they're, they're actually asking them that, but, right.
I'm sorry, no, I was gonna say, the entire project would be seventy?
Yeah, it's, it's closer to, it's closer to, the entire, the entire referendum's closer to eighty million, you're getting sixteen point nine percent state aid.
Got it.
So you're, it's twenty.
Without that, we have to ask taxpayers for the, the full amount, which is what we're trying to avoid, obviously.
It, it, has the board, I, I mean, I, I just go back to that point again. Has the, the Board of Education taken into account the, the pressure to grow for Sparta? I mean, why, you know, we, we might be going back to the.
This, this project, this project goes back, I'd say at least three years, where we've studied sites that the board owns, we've studied sites that the town owns, we've studied options to, to build at each of the schools. We've opt, looked at options to build a brand-new school. So we've, and this is what the district has determined is the best, the best solution with the information that's available, and the site that, after they've done, after they've looked at all the various other options in the township. So the district has looked at and taken into consideration the pressure to, to grow in Sparta.
Thank you.
Just to piggyback off of that, then, you said that it's been in the works for three years, and it was a five-year projection. What census are you working off of?
The demographic report was dated June twenty-fourth, or, excuse me, June of twenty twenty-four, and that's when we started the designs for this, when we actually went to the state. The state actually used a, a, a higher enrollment projection than the demographer. So we, the state actually, uh, has a different number than what the demographer based on more current enrollment numbers.
So it was twenty twenty-four estimated, and it projected, what, up to twenty twenty-nine?
I believe so. Yes.
Okay, um, and if this population does increase, and you do need something in the future, where, have you thought about where it would go on this particular site? Is there the ability to build a second story on some of it, or would you expand more into some of the areas that are now? I don't even know where you would expand, but what, what are your thoughts on that?
We did not go beyond the projected, the five-year projection. Uh, there are, you can look at putting a second story on buildings. It gets very costly and very, in our, in my experience, very costly and very time-consuming, and it's a displacement, it's a more of a displacement of the students that are underneath, you know, while they're, they're erecting the, the structure. It is, uh, it is a solution, uh, that could be looked at in the future, but this, we felt, this was the best, solution that addressed the needs of the district, based on the information that was, that was projected out.
What other options are there?
Uh, as far as for this site?
Yeah.
Oh, off the top of my head, uh, we could expand out into the, into the, depending on where the stormwater goes, we could expand out into the bus parking. We'd have to relook at the bus, where, how the buses get treated. We could go off the other direction, off where the parking lot is to the, to, where the parking lot is for the gym. I mean, a lot, a lot of that is, and it's, it's very speculation, right, right, just, you're kind of hitting me with it. Uh, where the trailers are, we could look to maybe build along that area, um, should the need, should the need arise, but we'd have to, and I would want to then look at, I'd want to look at the, the entire district as a whole again.
Just want to, you know, make sure that there is some flexibility in this, and that we just don't get locked in.
Right.
But I had another question, I'm looking at this, it's pink and red, I don't know what it's up there, at the very top, the kindergarten classrooms where they're pink.
Mm-hmm.
And then you said at the end, there were bathrooms?
At the bathrooms closest, there's bathrooms closest to the gymnasium.
So the kindergarten classrooms will not have their own bathrooms?
Uh, Department of Ed standards require that they have their own bathrooms inside the classroom. So, so each of the kindergarten classrooms have to be a thousand square feet, fifty square feet included for a bathroom.
So they will be there?
Yes.
Okay, all right, um, and I had one other question somewhere, I read that the gymnasium is going to be a high school-type gymnasium. What is the rationale for that, I mean, since they're K through two?
And just a clarification that, it's not, when we say a high school's type, it's gonna be basketball court, the high school court size, as opposed to an elementary school size. This gives the, the district, as well as the community, better opportunity, better functions to allow more, because not just can they do one long court, they can break it and do, do two short courts. When we talk about, when we talk about high school size, it's really high school court. The plan, they're showing very light, small on this, but it will have some bleachers, but not like, uh, like the Sparta High School bleachers. When we, you know, when, so when you think high school ble, the high school gymnasium, you're probably thinking of that magnitude. It's really just the court size and some additional area, the runoff area, and the side areas are a little bit bigger than they would be for an elementary school.
Would it be limited to the K through two population, or would you have high school or middle school coming down there to have basketball games, since it is that kind of court?
That would be at the discretion of the Board of Education.
That's about all I had on this.
Can I piggyback off of something that she just said? Uh, it sounds like the gym would be capable of having more than one gym class going at the same time?
It could, yes, because you can, you can subdivide the, you can sub, this gym of this size can be subdivided. So it'll have that, it'll have that mesh and curtain that would drop down in the middle, and you could also then run two courts, if you, if it's for basketball, you could run two courts on either side, as opposed to the one long court.
Okay.
You following me?
So you could also have multiple kindergarten classes, multiple first-grade classes, multiple second-grade classes, all having little gym, uh, at the same time?
The design of this is, right now, the gymnasium that they have now is actually called a cafeteria. Is really what the, the term of the existing multipurpose room they have. They have assemblies, lunch, gym, everything happens in there in one, in one day. Well, it, it's very difficult to have gym, set up for lunch, break down from lunch, clean from lunch, get back to gym. This allows the cafeteria to be truly just a, just a lunch room or a assembly space. The gym, the gym classes would now happen in the proposed gymnasium.
And just one more thing, during this construction period, how long will construction period take?
About two years.
Two years, and what about the kids who are in classes during that time? How will they be separated from everything going on? Will this occur during the school day, or after three o'clock, or?
As I've said at some of the public forums, it's not gonna be an easy task. There will be disruption, it is a construction site. The constr, uh, there is a construction manager that's been brought on board by the Board of Ed, as well as myself and my, my team. My team special, or my firm specializes in education, construction, so that's, that's pretty much all we do. So we will work with the construction manager and the contractor, once the bidding comes in, and we will put in the construction documents, where the construction fence goes, where the access gates go, where the times of deliveries go, come and go, and when the, when the contractors will en, enter and exit the site. One of the nice things about this is, it is separate, it is separate from the building, sorry, it is separate from the building. This grouping here will, it will be disruptive to a certain extent. We'll have the two summers, uh, summer of twenty-six and the summer, summer of twenty-seven? No, yeah, summer twenty-six, twenty-seven, yeah, and then actually a little bit of summer twenty-eight. By then, a lot of the disruptive work will have stopped by the summer of twenty-eight, and it's really just finishing touches on the inside and some exterior work. The intent is that summer of twenty-six, shovels are in the ground, excavation happens, foundations, the larger disruptive work happens at that point. Then as you get into the school year, unfortunately, uh, uh, it, it's, it's, it is a construction site. We'll try and make it as peaceful as we can. Uh, we can work with, we can work with the contractor on fencing, whether it has the, the, the wind barriers, you know, things like that to eliminate. But it also is an opportunity for the kids to kind of, you know, they can kind of see, uh, what's going on too. You know, it's interesting for the kids to see cranes and steel and, and, but it's, it's always our job, and our professionals, to maintain the safety of a site for a school, for this, for the kids of the, of the district. That's, that's the number-one job when we set foot, what we call, you know, we'll call boots on the ground.
And then, of course, I have, you know, one other question relating to the health and safety of these, the kids K through two. Um, you'll have a lot of construction people coming in and out of the site, how will they be vetted?
Uh, we can ask for background checks, and we will ask for background checks on all the employees that will, or, excuse me, all the contractors and subcontractors that will set foot on the job site, and that'll be throughout the district too, that won't be just, that won't be just for Alpine, because we will, as I said, we will have other projects going on at all the buildings. So all the contractors will be required for background checks.
I have one more thing, continuing on that safety, uh, thread, um, and you may have touched it when, uh, upon it when, uh, Mr. Poro asked, but in terms of safety for the children, in the event of, you know, God forbid, um, a, a shooting or a shooter, what's the, architecturally, what's, what's the design for the classrooms?
Well, the, the design of the classrooms, uh, have, they'll, they'll have the lockdown functionality, so that should they go into a, an emergency procedure, the corridor doors will be able to be locked. We're really getting into the nitty-gritty of this, but this is based on my experience, and what we, we will give the board options to choose, right? Uh, key fob access, lockdown, uh, scenarios, uh, automatic on the doors, um, the glazing on the first floor, this goes back to what, um, Mr. Porzo asked about safety procedures and best practices. Uh, first floor windows need to be bullet resistant, they, they're not required to be bulletproof, but they're required to be impact bullet resistant. There's a big difference between those. That's, that goes back to the best practices, so everything from a certain, that really, we just do the first floor down. We have the, the security vestibules, we have the, uh, we have the bollards for vehicular, uh, that's, that's really the big three.
The other thing I'll add to that is, once the board decides what security measures they would want, we wouldn't publicize that. Nobody would have access to that, because you wouldn't want somebody knowing exactly what they have.
Of course, we just want to know that they're there.
But, like, it certainly will, there's a Department of Ed requirement of that nature that we would have to address.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Uh, yeah.
Go ahead.
The June twenty twenty-four demographic report, um, what census was that based on?
Twenty twenty.
States here the twenty twenty census.
It is, okay.
And just to, to piggyback on that, uh, since we were thinking along the same lines, um, I, I just wanted clarification. I think you had mentioned that, um, the state used a higher demographic number than, than what was presented, do you know how much higher?
I don't think I have that in this book, I apologize. It was, it was when, it was when we were submitting to the state, when we originally submitted, uh, there's a, there's a thing called the Long Range Facility Plan. When we updated the Long Range Facility Plan, and we put in the enrollment numbers that the demographer, uh, projected out. The state came back with a comment and said they, they, they have these numbers, so I don't, I don't have that in front of me, and I don't, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have that in this book.
I also have, um, a couple of questions about the stormwater. Have you thought about putting a green roof instead of putting stormwater management on the ground or under the ground? Have you also considered putting a green roof on the addition?
Uh, at this point in time, we have not, uh, my firm has only done one green roof, uh, in the history of our, in the history of thirty years. So, uh, we have not looked at for this school. It becomes, it becomes a little bit of an issue of maintenance too, and the added load to the building increases the cost of the structure.
Okay.
We have not looked at it for this.
Okay, what about the addition of rain gardens?
Uh, we have not, but, you know, it's something that we, that we could look at.
Okay.
Yeah, that might have been some, sorry, just top on that, uh, enviromi, enviromi.
Yeah, that might have been some, sorry, just top on that. Uh, enviromit, environmental, um, I think brought up rain gardens and just native plant, but when you get to the landscape plan, those are just kind of, thanks.
Okay, board, you have before you an, an application for your review by recommendation of a, uh, Alpon Elementary School, uh, addition and renovation. It was presented, uh, by the Board Attorney and also the, uh, uh, Board Retained Architect. The record reflects that there was a, uh, expert report by way of, uh, Appello and Associates through David, uh, and his report of August twentieth, two thousand twenty-five was placed on the record, as well as, uh, Lindsay's report through Neglia of August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. In addition, the, uh, committees and, uh, subgroups, those, uh, reports and memorands were also given to the applicant and are all part of the record. I believe it would be proper, uh, for the board to give an endorsement subject to those, uh, recommendations, or you can give no, uh, no endorsement and just make reference to those comments. So whatever the board feels comfortable with.
What does the board feel comfortable with?
Just a general, uh, question. Does the public get a chance to comment on this at all, or?
The public will comment at the referendum.
Okay. Thank you.
I got a postcard that there was a public hearing on September something or other for Alpine.
Can we speak to that?
Yeah, there's, there's been a number of.
Right, September ninth, I believe it's September ninth, there is a public forum, information forum, and it's gonna, it's gonna be at Alpine, and it's, uh, it's more of a information session where you can sit down with the, the financial. Uh, I will be there answering questions about anything on the referendum, from an architectural standpoint, financial, uh, tax impacts, uh, they'll, they'll be able to, to address that. Uh, the board members will be there to answer questions about, uh, the impacts on, on the implications from the board's standpoint. Uh, and we welcome, we welcome everyone in the community to come and attend, and if they have questions, you know, we'll gladly, we'll gladly spend the time and, and, and talk you through it.
I was wondering today if there are, at that session or prior to, or after it, would there be any ability to tour the facility as it is now?
At that session?
I mean, I don't think, I, you know, ninety-seven percent of the population has probably never been in this building. Now, I, I have no idea what the number is, but ninety percent of the population may not have been in this building, right? So we don't know what the pressures are that are on the schools and on the students because of the age, age of the property.
That's part of the information session as well.
Okay.
Not just speak to the professionals, but you can tour the facility. You can, I don't, I don't want to speak for the superintendent, but if you can go out back and see where it's gonna go, and I'll stand out there and go, yep, it's gonna be about here. Um, but yes, the, there will be an opportunity to tour the existing building.
Okay. But once again, the delta, the change of students, it, that you're thinking is, is minimal. Okay.
If you want, I saw the superintendent wanted to step up. If, uh, would you just stand there, please? As long as you're ready to tell the truth, hold truth, and what the truth is of God. Name and, uh, just your title for the record.
Hi, I'm Matthew Beck. I am the superintendent of Sparta Schools.
I, I saw you get up, and I just thought you may want to say something.
Uh, I mean, really, um, Alan did a really good job of covering it. Um, the, I've been in the school district now. This is my, I'm entering my fifth school year in the, in the school district. And, um, right from even in the interview process, that was, this was the main concern that was brought to me, and it's been a main concern since I've been superintendent, is the overcrowding at Alpine Elementary School. So, um, we, as Alan said, we went through a lot of different options as an, as an administrative team, as a Board of Education, uh, talking with our architects, what could be the best solution for this? We ruled out many things, um, and we arrived at this as a solution. Um, we feel that, um, this is the best solution for Sparta Schools. Um, all, if, if there was going to be, right now, there's an overcrowding at Alpine School, but that, uh, when that bubble moves through the system, each of the other schools is below capacity, meaning they can absorb one hundred, two hundred more students. Um, so the bubble that exists, the overcrowding that exists, is exclusive to Alpine Elementary School at this time. Um, and to Alan's point, we can only make plans and projections based on the demographic study, unfortunately. Um, and part of that demographic study at the time was applications that were on file for future development. And at the time of that, there were no applications on file. I'm not sure what, today, what applications are on file, but if applications come through and, uh, developing happens in Sparta Township, and you're talking about thousands of units or thousands of families, uh, we're gonna be looking at more, we'd be looking at more overcrowding in all of the schools, and there'd have to be a, a, a much bigger solution.
Okay.
All right, Ben. Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
I'm, I'm very happy to see that this plan brings music and art and gym back into dedicated spaces, because K through two are critical formative years for our kids.
Yes, fully agree.
And so the, what they learn here and the experiences that they will have the opportunity to gain here are, they're gonna follow them throughout the Sparta School System, whether, whether they go to Sparta Middle School, Sparta High School. If we lay the right foundation for them here, then they will have a leg up. And a lot of kids don't have that. So.
All right, so since this is still evolving, and it's not a final site plan, and it will undergo changes, would it be prudent then to make a motion that we support the expansion of the Alpine School without being, being very specific on it?
Do you have that? Look, you, you make your recommendations, and, uh, whatever you're comfortable as a board. And even if, if you want to make individual statements, but if, uh, if there's nothing wrong with someone moving and second a motion in support of the application, subject to the discussion and the reports we did, that we submitted.
Okay, then, if that would be the motion, would there be a second?
I'll second that motion, Rob Otto.
Hi. Do a roll call? Who made the motion? Ken did.
No, Ken did not make the motion. Ken framed, Ken framed the motion.
Ken framed the motion, sorry.
Joan, you.
The, the motion.
I'll make the motion.
The, the motion, uh, that, uh, the chairperson, that Joan is putting forth, is that, uh, in support of the Alpine Elementary School expansion, uh, subject to discussion on the record here today, the written reports of the board engineer, the, uh, board planner, and the different agency memos that were set forth, and again, the discussion, the constructive construction that was just discussed as far as, you know, our rain barrels, the environmental possible, uh, solar panels and all those positive things, the police comments, the sanitary, the utilities, all those comments are part of the resolution.
Okay, and then, Rob, you seconded that?
I did.
Okay, now maybe we have a roll call.
Here, Getbacher?
Yes.
Net Burke?
Yes.
Ron Day?
Yes.
Celeste Luciano?
Yes.
Ernie Ragsdod?
Yes.
Councilman Mark Scott?
Yes.
Brian Zimmerman?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Robert Otto?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Joan Furman?
Yes. Congratulations and best of luck with your further development.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, if we could, board, just, uh, real quick, just to move things along while, uh, council and his group are, um, packing up. Uh, I did submit, since we have a new board member, just for in, information, uh, the powers of the planning board, that's New Jersey Statute forty, colon fifty-five D dash twenty-five. The highlight in yellow is mine, uh, just highlighting common, some of the areas that, you know, we have the power of, obviously, the master plan, subdivisions, you see official tax maps, and it, it goes on, and, uh, you know, the capital improvement program, we saw that, that's a resolution in your package, variances in certain buildings, again, subdivision, that's number six, that's another, um, a resolution in your package. So when someone says it was pursuant to the power forty, colon fifty-five D dash twenty-six, and they make reference to a subcategory in parentheses five, this is the black letter law that we're looking at. Also, it's of interest, you look, uh, that's section B, the planning board may, and, and may is, is a good thing, because we're discussing land use. You may participate and prepare and review programs or plans required by state or federal law or regulations. You can assemble data, uh, as to plan, uh, continuous planning process, and perform advisory duties. I mean, you come across things you see on applicants, and you can advise the governing body of that. You cannot implement law yourself. You are, uh, you have your power to determine as the planning board, but again, you have certain advisory power that's set forth there. Uh, realize, I also gave you the Board of Adjustment, uh, powers, just so you have kind of a feel. The planning board are permitted uses. So when applications come before you, it's presumed that they are, they are permitted, and that you work with the applicant. If, obviously, there's, um, parking charts or stored, uh, uh, size dimensions, public health, safety, welfare issues, you have concerns that you have the legal right to deny those applications. Uh, but a lot of times, with a permitted application, I've seen this with this board, you try to work with the applicant that they amend the plan for public health, safety, and welfare, versus the Board of Adjustment, which is non-permitted, uh, and those are considered use variances. It's a much higher standard of review. Uh, also in your package, I had given you, um, the resolution, and I apologize for the delay, on that capital improvement. That was, again, under your powers, more advisory. I, I only did a, a one page. It was very, uh, uh, straightforward on that wa- waste treatment, and it just makes reference to a report of, uh, David, and also, I'm gonna add that I believe that, uh, Lindsay did a report also. So, uh, if we could, uh, Lady Chairperson and the, the board, if, I know we have some other discussions, if we could pass the resolution for the capital improvement plan, uh, and I, the only addition I have to that is adding a reference to Lindsay's report. So this is the, uh, the one, again, I apologize, that was a late, um, addition. Uh, again, we're just making advisory. Uh, if you'll see here, you're reviewing capital improvement programs, is section five of your powers. It was in your package on the day.
All right, so this goes under resolutions, Resolution twenty-five dash seventeen, PB twenty-five dash seven thirty-two, Sussex County Technical School, uh, Capital Improvement Plan for the Wastewater Treatment Plan Replacement. Uh, would somebody enter to, make a motion to approve that resolution?
I make a motion, we approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who was that second?
That's Celeste Luciano.
I don't think you're eligible. I don't see you listed on here.
The capital improvement for the wastewater? I thought I was there. I'm sorry.
I'll second if, if need be. If she's less eligible, we'll leave her. If not, you just use me as a backup.
All right, thank you. Ernie Ragsdod?
Yes.
Brian Zimmerman?
Yes.
Ron Day?
Yes.
Councilman Mark Scott?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Robert Otto?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Joan Furman.
Yes. And the other resolution that we have here is the Resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighteen, PB twenty-five dash seven thirty-three, LJL Investments LLC. That was the one on Conestoga Trail.
Yes, that, yes, that was the subdivision, pretty straightforward, uh, they're creating three lots, and, uh, if you recall, there were no bulk variances, uh, pretty straightforward. The board engineer and board planner had good comments on them that were agreed to by the applicant, you know, uh, by way of, if they do come in with an application that does require a variance on the home, they have to come back before this board or the Board of Adjustment. So this is a pretty straightforward, uh, resolution, um, memorializing your June eighteenth determination, and you can see clearly recor- referencing the board engineer, planner, and those other, uh, subcommittees' approvals. So if someone would move that.
Motion, please.
I'll make the motion to approve. Celeste Luciano.
I'll second it. Ernie Ragsdod.
Okay, roll call, please.
Ernie Ragsdod?
Yes.
Brian Zimmerman?
Yes.
Councilman Mark Scott?
Yes.
Celeste Luciano?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Robert Otto?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Joan Furman.
Yes.
All right, Lady Chairperson, I have, uh, just closed.
I'll also, um, oh, yes, Ron Day.
Sorry, I don't have you listed, so, but you were here.
Oh, no, yeah, I wasn't. I was, that's why.
I'm sorry.
That's a good point, thank you.
When you watch those videos, you feel like you're there.
Yeah.
So, uh, Lady Chairperson and, uh, board, that, uh, brings us back to the, uh, motion issue. There was a re- uh, request to go into closed session with regard to the cannabis. Uh, that can happen, or if you want to carry that, that's possible, but I, but I do think, uh, it would be timely now to revisit, uh, the motion. There was a motion and a second and a discussion on the chairperson. So the discussion should continue.
Discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Brian, what, what's happened between last week and this week, Brian?
Last meeting?
Yeah, between last meeting and this week?
There were some memos, some other things came to light, there was some back and forth. I'm really not here to play referee. I'm not volunteering my time to be a referee, but I feel like this board is so divided, it's become toxic, and I think we need to change, just like Ernie had said.
You mean the memos that have been coming from the mayor in his frontal assault on, in his frontal assault on Joan Furman, because he didn't get his way with cannabis? Is that what it is?
No, it's not. Because it's created such a toxic environment, that this board has become so political, all right? This ship needs to be righted and go back to what we're supposed to be doing.
And we're gonna write it now, and then, and then we're gonna have an election in the fall, and if, and if Celeste wins, then we'll have to change again, and then we go into, to January, and we change it again?
I'm not a referee.
How's that work?
I'm not trying to choose sides here. It's just not the environment that we should have, and I think we should switch it up.
Well, I think Joan Furman is the best, best planning board attorney, best planning board attorney, best planning board chair that we've had in, in, in a long time. She does all the research, she does all the work, she's on top of it, she's very organized, she's does the, the best that she can for the town of Sparta, and that's what we're here, all here to do. Not to play games, not to be, play politics.
Well, that's what I feel like is going on, is a lot of games, okay? That's what, the way I feel.
Well, I would hope that there's not a lot of games at the planning board level. There's a lot of games going on i- in, in, in the mayor's office, but there's, I, I.
I guess that, I'm not a referee, and I'm not picking sides. I just see what's going on, back and forth between all of you, and I, I don't want to be a part of it. So let's switch it up.
All right, well, I'm gonna address some of this here, because you're referring to the memos. You brought that up. Um, and that's really what kicked all of this off. And that memo, um, started, I'm gonna go through, you know, my side, because I've taken your bullets, whether you realize that or not.
Fine.
We have voted nine zero regarding the original, um, cannabis, um, ordinance, and we made a recommendation to the town council, uh, with ten different recommendations. They were totally ignored. Um, you're all aware of that. Um, when it was brought up that it didn't, they did not follow the language of the, the statute, and that the vote was problematic, uh, that's when all of this started. That, um, came up like in, May thirteenth. By May twenty-seventh, Neil Clark, the mayor, uh, wrote a letter saying it was on behalf of the town council. Town council, never came to town council.
Never came.
Never came.
Ben, this is a war that is being waged that I do not want to be a part of. It's come to the board.
Well, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have my say.
Maybe you should step down there, Brian.
Again, if, if I could, the, a motion was made, a second, we're having a discussion. Uh, Joan, if you could depart, you know, kind of condense the, your position.
Well.
No, I think this is very important.
I think we need to talk about this, because, as I said, I have taken all of your bullets. Um, I did nothing wrong. So after this, all of a sudden, it became a personal vendetta. And on May twenty-seventh, there was a letter, eleven-page letter that came out and accused me of three things. One is of using my position to ask a question about a personal matter. And as I sent in the letters to you, it said, "Dear Dory, I am writing as a private citizen. I never used my professional capacity," and this was something that was going on long before I joined planning board. And I wrote that way, and Neil turned it into something else, totally. He takes certain statements, and he just turns them into. He takes certain statements and he just turns them into things that would suit his purpose. So on June 4th, I got called in. Neil was acting as the township manager. Again, town council really didn't have a part of any of this. Jim Zep sat there. Neil took over. That was not his responsibility. We have a Faulkner form of government. And he can preside over town council meetings, he can sign documents on the town council's behalf, and he can officiate marriages. He cannot step in as the town manager and do all of this and say, "Oh, I'm conducting an investigation," when in fact, no investigation was made. I have every right to represent myself. First of all, something like that would never come to the planning board. It's a residential application. If it did, I would have recused myself. But I have every right to represent myself. For him to take that statement and turn it around as something I did wrong is wrong on his part. Then he also, in the letter he sent to you, said that I was doing something with the C-1H zone because of Mark Scott's bed and breakfast. Well, we've been talking design standards in the C-1H zone infinitum. Had nothing to do with that. In fact, at the first meeting Lake Mohawk had, bed and breakfast was still in there. The second meeting they have where it came out, I wasn't even at that meeting. I wasn't there. I knew nothing about it. Yet he took that statement and he turned it around again.
To be fair, just to interject, I brought up C-1H.
Exactly.
So, because I was frustrated with design standards.
Right. And we've asked for design standards, the boards asked for it. We went to environmental with the.
Lighted.
No, 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 the master plan the other day, and they're talking aesthetics and we need to do something about it. The zoning board the other day, Glenn Keane said, "Isn't there a subcommittee working on this? I thought we were gonna do this. This has to come from the forefront. If you have master plan money, it should be used for this purpose. Let's step it up." We're hearing it right and left from everybody. So.
Wasn't there a letter from zoning, actually, about design standards, working with them?
Um, yeah, that's something else, but yes. So, you know, we voted as a board, 9-0. Ken wrote the letter. It went up there. Mark brought it up, gets shot down, then comes up with another reason, which is ridiculous. But everything I've done, I've represented this board, I've represented all of you. So I just want you to know that. Whatever you decide, I don't care. I'm glad, I'm glad to be a planning board member. I try to always do my best and I do what I think is best for this board. And the conflict is not from me. I went into those meetings saying, "What can we do to move forward?" Instead, I get the attacks. So what can we do to move forward again? And it just keeps happening. Then he inserts himself into our executive session meeting. He was not invited. He said he was taking the township manager's position. He's not allowed to do that. He's just not allowed. So he has really a misuse of power. He has had, in my opinion, his own ethical violations where I have had none. Things he accuses us of, of spending money. Not us. So all the things that are happening are targeted. They are targeted to having me resign. I don't know if you're comfortable in saying what has happened to you, but that's up to you. But it has been happening and it is all targeted. And you can blame me, but I tell you, it is not me, so.
As you can see, as you've seen in the latest memo that the mayor has sent and that was distributed to the group.
Right, that's what continued it. I didn't continue it.
Right. You know, he's not only targeting Joan, but now he's coming after me. And back on June 23rd, I was, I think that was the day, June 23rd, the Zep's office, that meeting, all that.
The June 4th? I don't know.
I'm sorry, June 4th.
Maybe a different one, yeah.
Okay, it was the day of the, day of the meeting in Jim Zep's office that you, that you attended. You know, later that day, I was, I was blackmailed by certain people in the government that said that if you don't get Joan Furman to resign by the end of the day, we will be filing ethics charges against you, Mark Scott. So, I mean, this is the kind of politics that's going on in this town.
To be a part of it.
Okay, well, then resign. You resign.
All right, whoa, 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 wait, wait.
Joan is not bothering the problem.
Gang, gang, gang.
Mr. Poro, Mr. Poro, could you please get this meeting under control?
This is a public, this is a public forum. And there is a motion and a second, there is a discussion. And, you know, Mark, you have the ability to make your statements. If we can just keep it focused on the motion. If there are five votes to remove the chairperson, the person's removed. If there are not, they're not. So I think everyone has put their position on the record. The vote is gonna be what it is unless you have something more to add.
Really, because I would like somebody to say what I have done that is unethical, that is not in the best interest of the planning board, or that I have caused.
I would like to say one thing. And this is not in terms of ethics or what have you. This is in terms of the board and what's best for the board, right? And Mark, I have said this to you, you and I have had a private conversation about this when I approached you and I asked you what we could do to try to remedy some of these issues. And I asked you if we could all sit down and have a conversation and really just get to the meat of what the issues were so that the board could go back to being a quasi-judiciary, which is what we are.
So why don't you share?
I am, I'm gonna share it right now, right now. So what ends up happening is that when we're in this situation and the news is about one or two things or one or two people, we lose our integrity. And when we lose our integrity and we lose our ability to keep our objectivity, whether that's in our own personal space, which obviously, there's derision in our own personal space, or by the view of the public, one way or another, when we lose that objectivity, we become inert. We're ineffective. So the question then becomes, how do we remedy that situation? Now, I know if I were in your position, I would be just as upset as you. Not saying that I wouldn't be. Not discounting you, not discrediting the work that you're doing. I do have some reservations on what's going on with Minor Site Plan Subcommittee and why Ken Poro is actually sitting in on those meetings and how that budget is being, because there is no budget for Minor Site Plan Subcommittee. So how that's being paid for, I have questions about that. But again, that's something that we could have had in a conversation if we had been capable of sitting down and having that conversation. But apparently, the words that I had put out there fell on deaf ears. So here we are, and the question then becomes, do we continue on the path that we're on? Or do we find a new path that can put us in a position where we can get back to our objectivity and our integrity and let the news be about the good works that the board is doing as a board and not about what, even, even if all that's happening, and this may be 100% true, I'm not you, I'm not sitting in your seat. It may be 100% true that you're being used as a political pawn and this is political fodder. If that's the case, let's remove the ammunition. If we remove the ammunition, they can't continue to do that, can they? That's the point. So if we can get back to a space where we can get our objectivity back, get the public's opinion back, get ourselves back to doing the good work that we need to do, I think that puts us all in a better position. Instead of the derision that's here, it's, it's just, it's uncomfortable at best.
Well, it's not, I'm just the pawn in all of this.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
I don't have Facebook, I stay off of all of that stuff. I don't create it. We know who is creating it.
And I'm not sitting here saying that you're a bad chair. I just think that the current environment is toxic.
As I said, the last meeting, I said a change.
And you think this is gonna change, then still be it. So, yeah, as I said, it's up to you. I'm proud to serve on the planning board. I will continue to serve on the planning board. And that's all I have to say. But it has been an attack for no reason other than the cannabis and.
Then let us protect you.
So. It's been an attack, it's been a frontal assault because we voted 9 to 0 to put forth 10 items about why we didn't believe that the cannabis aligned with the master plan. And we pointed out 10 things, and it was totally. We all did. We were unified at that moment. And it went to the town council and it was ignored. And we're asking why it was ignored? Why has this happened? Why is it being ignored? Is it being done for some political reasons at the, at the, at the mayoral level? It was totally ignored by the mayor. And then when he didn't get his way, he began to attack Joan personally. And then when he had, then when his efforts were starting to fail, he decided to come after me. So, I mean, we can go through it over and over again.
Let's not.
Again, we understand the narrative.
And let's not go through Rob Bleakley. Rob Bleakley was removed just because of the cannabis issue.
As Neil said, we need, we'll throw a bone.
Right, we need to throw a bone. And so they threw him, Rob Bleakley, because he was fighting cannabis too. He wants to keep this town the good town that it is, the enigma that it is.
And we'll have a referendum to make that decision, right? Every Sparta voter will get a chance.
And our, and our mayor has said over and over again that he is, is, is not necessarily going to obey what.
That may be true, but that's outside the motion that we have right now.
It has nothing to do with the mayor.
All of that is outside the motion that we have right now.
All right, so can, what I'd like to do, guys, guys, I'm just saying, a motion has been made. I'm echoing, it's been seconded. I'm echoing a lot of what was said, I think, in that we're not happy with how it was. I would like a reset. I would like to ask Mark and the mayor to, you know, kind of do what I think Brian's saying is, none of us want this, this, I hate politics. This is terrible. So can we move forward and actually get something done? Because if, if we can't, on, on town council as well, I would urge town council, you know, they were elected to serve us and we're serving, we're losing sight of who we're serving. We're serving the town. And right now, we're not getting anything done but just airing dirty laundry that most people who are watching this aren't even gonna understand. So I would just urge that whatever changes may be made, that we make them and then continue in good faith, starting now. I don't care what happened before, let's just reset if we're truly resetting because I'm sick of these little schemes.
I hear you, I'm clear. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, so.
We're all sick of it. We're all sick of taking this pressure.
I think we're, we're at the point, Mr. Poro, I believe we're probably at the point of a roll call.
I believe that would be, that'd be proper, unless anyone else has anything else to be said. Dory?
As the person who was appointed by the mayor to take the place of Mr. Bleakley, I would like to say that I read the memo that went out on July 23rd. Tonight was the first night that I met anyone here except for Mark Scott, who I've met a few times. It is my understanding that for all of us, that when we are in this position of being members of a municipal board and we are public facing, that we have to be extremely careful of what we do in private. And just writing on an email, "I'm writing in a private citizen capacity", that, that doesn't really cut it. That does, just because you're saying, "Oh, I'm writing as a private citizen", when you're writing to the attorney of the planning board. You have, we all have access through this position to people that the general public does not. So we have to be extremely careful when we are sitting up here that we should think twice about going out and collecting signatures for anything. Because we are tasked with being impartial. We are tasked with being fair. We are tasked with giving anyone who comes before this board or the Minor Site Plan Committee a fair hearing. And things like emails and getting petitions signed, that, in my professional judgment, that is a slippery slope. And it doesn't, it just doesn't look right. Whether or not anyone on this board agrees with the cannabis resolution, it's my understanding that it passed. And the state of New Jersey made it legal. And I, you know, based on my background, I worked for four years in Warwick, New York. And they have a very big revenue stream, ratables, that has come in from cannabis.
We're not talking about.
We're not talking about cannabis, we're on the motion.
But what we are talking about, what we are talking about is what it looks like to the public. And I feel very uncomfortable because this is my first meeting. I was just sworn in. I've just met everyone except for Mark. And I'm the person that replaced Mr. Bleakley, who wrote something to tap into Sparta that made all of this public. And, and I agree with Celeste. It is a very uncomfortable position for us to be in.
All right, I'm just gonna educate you on one thing here, which is Statute 40A:9-22.5, Code of Ethics for Local Government Officers and Employees Under Jurisdiction of the Local Finance Board, which is what we are. "No elected government officer shall be prohibited from making an inquiry for information on behalf of a constituent if no reward or other thing of value is promised to, given, or accepted by the officer or member of his immediate family." And I asked an inquiry as a private person, which I have a right to do under the local ethics board. Also, "Nothing shall prohibit any local government officer, employee, or member of his immediate family from representing himself or themselves in negotiations or proceedings concerning his or their own interests." So, you know, as I said, it was blown up. I'm gonna leave it up to you for your vote. I'm proud to serve, but I contend I did nothing wrong. I have served the board to the best of my abilities and leave it at that.
I mean, this is really coming from an external force.
Yes.
It's not this board. This board was, this board voted 9 to 0. 9 to 0. We were unified, we were thinking.
Mr. Poro, are we talking about cannabis?
This is an external force, which is coming our way.
Okay, I think it's time for a vote, Dory.
Birgit Bogler?
All right, so the, the, the motion is to remove Joan Furman as the chairperson. That's the motion. A yes would be to remove, a no would be that she stays.
Birgit Bogler?
Yes.
Net Burke? Yes, I seconded though. Do I vote again?
Yes, you vote.
Yeah.
Ron Day?
No.
Celeste Luciano?
Yes.
Bernie Reigstad?
Yes.
Mark Scott?
No.
Brian Zimmerman?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Robert Otto?
No.
Chairwoman Joan Furman?
No.
All right, so the vote is five to, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 to 4. It does pass. Your vice chair is Robert Otto. What I would recommend to the board is, there's been a lot of discussion tonight. And I would recommend that you move to the next meeting, who you decide to be the next chair. Rob Otto should step in as, for tonight, as the vice chair to get us through this meeting, rather than go through a discussion of who the chair should be. We'll put on the agenda at the next meeting a vote on the recommendation of who the replacement chair should be. But again, I'm strongly recommending that as far as tonight, Rob Otto as the vice chair take over. Let's conclude the meeting. I'd also recommend we do not go in closed session. I think we've done a lot today. Mr. Otto as the acting chair, I think.
Well, I'd like to make a, I hear what you're saying, but, you know, Rob has served faithfully as vice chair, and I would like to put forth a motion that he take over as the chair.
Second.
I would like to make another motion.
Well, we have a motion on the table.
There's a motion on the floor.
Okay.
Saying no discussion, Dory, vote.
Birgit Bogler?
No.
So the vote is whether Rob. So the vote is whether Rob Otto should be the chairperson.
Jeanette Burke?
No.
Ron Day?
No.
Les Luciano?
No.
Ernie Reigstad?
No.
Councilman Mark Scott?
Yes.
Brian Zimmerman?
No.
Uh, Vice Chairman Robert Otto?
No.
You could have saved us a lot of time if you just said you didn't want it, Rob.
I didn't, I didn't say that, but it's pretty effortless and you need to work together.
Let's finish the vote, Rob. Let's finish the vote.
Yes.
All right. So it did not pass. Nonetheless, the vice chair is the acting chair for tonight. I would reiterate, rather than, uh, go through, take a breath, discuss who you want, uh, it's only two weeks away, who you want to be the chairperson, uh, going forward. So if that's okay with the board, Mr. Otto can get us through the meeting. The only thing I see that needs to be done is either the updates, which we can also carry to the next meeting, uh, and the, uh, public, uh, portion. So Rob, if you could bring us through the remainder, why don't you start with the, uh, the updates of the, uh, the council and the commission or subcommittees? Again, there's nothing on there that needs to be discussed today that can all be brought to next, uh, month's meeting, if that's okay? Is there anything that needs to be discussed, board, uh, by town, uh, council, environmental commissioners?
Question.
Dory, good point. Good point.
What about, prior to that, what about the cannabis referral?
I'm recommending that that, uh, be carried to the next meeting.
No, I think we should talk about it now.
We had thirty-five days.
Yeah. So there's a clock on it.
And this is the last day.
All right. So what, let's, let's keep going. Uh, why don't we do, uh, Rob, you're the acting chair. Let's just keep going down the list. Uh, you have, uh, we've done the public hearing, uh, the other business on the cannabis, uh, referral. That was a notice from the mayor and council, uh, to us. That is the next thing on the agenda. So Rob, if you can bring us through that.
Um, well, the work products, um, can we talk about that?
Yes. I had given, uh, an email on a, a work product that I really feel is, uh, we could discuss it in closed session, but there's nothing to hide here. Uh, the, uh, the current prohibited uses, uh, in Sparta deal with, uh, eighteen dash four point five H prohibited uses in all districts. It says sexually oriented businesses, number two, tattoo parlors, number three, all classes of cannabis establishment. And we were adding number four, smoke shop and other establishments that sell, uh, cannabinoid products, including, but not limited to hemp, uh, marijuana derived, uh, is that textures? Uh, edibles, topicals, vape products, capsules, pills, I guess that's, uh, phyllosybin or other similar products. So the discussion and in your package is that we recommend to the mayor and council, the inclusion of the number four in that your package, again, the smoke shops and other establishments that sell those products as noted. So that's the discussion.
So I wanted, I wanted to kick off, um, because when I read this, I saw two sides of this. Silas, um, Silas Sibin, um, we added, and I remember the discussion because Birgit wasn't here. Um, that's, that's kind of a step from what the mayor had requested, but, uh, the addition made sense, I think, is just to kind of, we made a determination on consistency based on a master plan that's forty-five years old or so. So it hadn't contemplated, um, marijuana legalization. Um, so I, I just want to point that part out, um, because we added that to the section. And I don't know if it should be its own section or if it should be included, or if it should just be more general. Because one of the things that, as people know, my frustration with minor site plan is that there's, uh, things could be very generalized, um, and then it would help with just making determinations. But we don't have the ability to change, um, the existing. So should it be number five? And then also, uh, would the section about cannabinoid, um, and marijuana derived tinctures apply to things like liquor stores that currently exist and do sell, um, infused drinks? I, I just want to, I just want some direction on that, because this is a very simple uh, way to achieve what I think the mayor asked us to do. So on its face, I would just support it and say, let's do it and move on. But I want to make sure that I understand how this affects the current businesses that are in town. Not smoke shops, but like liquor stores that are advertising, um, infused drinks.
All right. So again, again, you're making a recommendation to the, uh, uh, mayor and council by way of number four. If we say smoke shops, comma, liquor stores and other establishments, and just keep the language. Uh, I don't think we need to pull out, uh, the.
The mushrooms.
The mushroom syllabus, syllabus, I apologize, I don't even been, pronounce it, but the, uh, I'm comfortable with the suggestion to the mayor and council that them clarify it. And based upon what, uh, Vice Chair Otto was saying, uh, in my memo to you, number four would be amended to smoke shops, comma, liquor stores and other establishments.
Mr. Poro?
Yes.
If we make that distinction, what then encompasses other establishments? Because when I read it, I, I assumed that liquor stores would be put under that umbrella. But if we, if we carve that out, then what falls under that grouping?
Uh, everything else, everything else, uh, you, you could just say, uh, you know, all establishments and not say smoke shop liquor stores. I'm comfortable that in your community, smoke shops are applicable. As Rob Otto's saying, liquor stores seem to be applicable. So you're really sounding specifically. And then you have to catch all, all other establishments. So, yeah, you have, uh, competent counsel at the, uh, uh, mayor and council level, he's, he can, uh, clarify that if need be. We're just reviewing and making recommendations. So, uh, good point. Uh, but I'm comfortable with, uh, just having smoke shops, comma, liquor store and other establishments. And if the mayor and council want to define other establishments, they have that ability. Or if you want to make a recommendation to the mayor and council for other establishments, that's proper also.
I just want to respond to Celeste's, uh, point. The reason that I called it out is, and I, I don't know about, uh, the various acts that, uh, legalize, um, some of these things, but my understanding is liquor stores are legally allowed to sell these. Um, so I want to know that we're correct in our standing to prohibit, because if we include this language, um, could it get thrown out? Uh, the entire, you know what I mean, Ernie? Sure. Yeah. Um, I, I don't know where we stand on that. So I, I would like to call that out because I see it as something, um, that should be called out. But I also know that it seems like the mayor is asking to let the state regulate going forward, which would make sense. But do we have the ability then to pull back what the state may already be regulating through the liquor stores?
All right. So good comments. Again, we don't need to overanalyze it. It's our recommendation.
Leave it with township attorney?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let, I think the point is that we should expand and that's the proposed language. Uh, engineer, planner, any thoughts? Uh, do you have a copy of my, my email? Yeah. Any, uh, Lindsay, any comments on that?
No.
Can you show that to David? Number four is the change or the addition.
Just, just for, um, on Rob's point, you know, one of the things that my thought is on, on liquor stores, you know, they, they have their liquor license hanging over their head. You know, we're, we're worrying about stores that sell, you know, um, non-regulated stuff and then could possibly be selling illegal things as well. You know, so, you know, where you have, you have one, you have the other, you know, kind of thing. I, I think we could eliminate liquor stores from it, just for the simple fact that they're not chance in their liquor license. It's worth over a million dollars, uh, to sell, uh, illegal narcotics. You know, and, and if they, if they did, they're going to lose their liquor license.
All right. But Ernie, I get that. But my question is, are we being arbitrary and capricious by saying tacitly, the liquor stores are selling these things that we've defined here that we can't sell? And now, uh, I, I, I get it. I think they're legally allowed to do it. So if we restrict it, then we're saying only the liquor stores can do this and no one else can. And so then a shop could sue the town and say, well, you've restricted me from doing exactly what the liquor store is doing. And then maybe that, that lawsuit would result in them being able to carry all of these things.
I, I think that sounds like a fight that the council needs to have.
One, one thought, I, I, again, I know we don't want to work it too much, but you know, looking at, we're calling out shops and liquor stores. Can we kind of geared towards the product as opposed to who sells it?
Right.
So no retail or no retail or gifting of cannabinoid products and then go on the whole thing. So it kind of look, kind of says, so if you're a liquor store, we're going to, you, we're going to shut you down there, but you still keep going forward. So it's more geared to the product than the store.
Okay. As long as we can do that.
All right. So what I would suggest then, we'll take out smoke shop liquor store. Number four will be no retail establishments that sell.
Or gift.
Or, or gift. All right. Good. Or gift. All right. Can I get, I, I think Ron moved that. Can we get a second?
I'll second that. Rob Otto.
Dory?
Birgit Bogler?
So this is the recommendation? This is the memo that the mayor asked for regarding the planning board's recommendations for what?
Uh, yes, on, uh, the, the cannabis issue. And you'll see my memo in the package. Uh, section eighteen, four dash five H already has one, two and three. And what we just discussed is number four on my, uh, memo. And we're, rather than say smoke shops and other establishments, we are changing that to no retail establishment that sells or gifts.
Mr. Poro, if I can, just one more clarification. I apologize. But, you know, when I look at the mayor's request of us, it was, is it feasible? It's not what do you agree with it or not?
Right.
So I think we're saying it's feasible and this is a way to do it. Now you, as the town council, you decide if you want it. So we're just addressing feasibility, not whether to have it or not.
Uh, good, good point. I mean, you, uh, let's amend the resolution or the motion, uh, as, as set forth by Mr. Ron. Uh, they, uh, and Rob, are you okay with that?
I'm okay with that, but now I'm looking at retail stores. Should we keep it more general?
Establishments.
Because, because they're.
You want to know the stores? You want to restrict the, the product sales?
Completely.
No establishment.
Oh, no, okay.
Any establishment. That was just.
All right. So the motion is being amended that no establishment sells, sell or gift. And, uh, uh, Ron, is that okay?
Yes.
So Ron's moving that. Rob, is that okay?
Yes.
All right. Dory, vote.
Ken, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Can we give just a little bit more context to, to Birgit, please? Because she was not here for, for this. And she does not have the original memo that was provided, um, in, in front of her. So can, can we just kind of like give her a, a little bit more context?
That is no problem. Uh, she also has the right to abstain.
Okay.
Uh, and.
I'm going to abstain then.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Jeanette Burke?
Yes.
Ron Day?
Yes.
Celeste Luciano?
Yes.
Ernie Reigstad?
Yes.
Councilman Mark Scott?
Yes.
Brian Zimmerman?
Yes.
Joan Furman?
Yes.
And, uh, Vice Chairman Robert Otto?
Yes.
All right. That takes care of, uh, Rob, that takes care of number, uh, six. Uh, number seven, Rob, we have the updates.
So Mark, um, you could update us on town council, but I'd ask you to maybe be, uh, just a little careful.
Sure. Okay. Uh, town council passed nineteen, uh, nineteen resolutions last week and, uh, and, uh, that was about it. Thanks.
Okay.
Uh, environmental commission, um, looked at some applications, uh, had a good stakeholder meeting, um, for a master plan. Um, and so we put forth some suggestions, which were somewhat alluded to as far as considering alternative energy, wind, solar, um, considering reducing impervious, uh, cover in the way of, uh, looking at parking standards, um, consider modifying wayfinding signage, um, and that would go to kind of design standards that, uh, we've been trying to push forward. Uh, considering even, uh, circulation patterns in town to encourage more pedestrian biking. Um, and then to also consider kind of the next twenty to forty years, uh, aging in place, um, creating a sense of community, uh, through some of these things. Um, and, um, then we looked at, uh, a couple of applications, one, uh, having a, um, a few questions on setbacks and nearby waterways. Um, yeah. So, uh, other subcommittees, master plan.
Yeah. Um, the, uh, master plan subcommittee, uh, is, uh, we're underway with various stakeholder groups. We've met with the Board of Education, the police, the fire department, environmental, parks and rec, the seniors. Uh, I may have missed one or two.
Library.
The library. Uh, there are some that are just ongoing, so I don't have the most up to date. Uh, but we have met with quite a few and we have more coming up in the next, uh, several weeks. Uh, we also, uh, made, uh, a motion to approve Neglia for the circulation element and transportation vision study. And that contract is submitted to the township and, uh, the Q, QPA is, uh, looking at whatever she does with the contract. And so hopefully that part will be signed soon. And we also approved for the background and the land use. So, um, that's where that stands.
So I think that we should sign the Neglia contract. We have seventy-five thousand dollars allocated to the master plan right now and in that bucket. So I think, you know, that should be something. I know we can't vote on it, but I would urge the planning department to do, to engage.
Well, I think, Ken, you said we can make a motion on it.
Well, if the, if the board is in support of that, you should reaffirm it. You should affirm it.
Okay. So can make a motion to affirm that the township proceeds with the Neglia circulation element transportation vision study? And it was thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars, I think? Very close.
Thirty-six thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. You're correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Yep.
Joan, were you the first? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, Joan, and then Ernie. Sorry.
There's a discussion.
Just a point of discussion. So again, I want to, if I can, uh, go to Ms. Fox here, um, just get her thoughts on it. Because again, when I look at the budget, I look at you as having that control. So what are your thoughts on our doing this?
To move forward with this?
Yes.
Yes, we have the money to do so.
Thank you.
Yes. And I've been working with the QPA. Um, she had gone on vacation for a little bit, but we brought it back up again today. We're working on it. And Lindsay and I have already talked about the documentation she needs to submit to the town and we're getting there.
Great. Thank you.
Just a couple more days we need. Yeah. So the holdup is not in the planning office at all.
No, I wasn't suggesting. I just wanted to make sure from a budgetary perspective.
Yeah, we're good. Okay.
Okay, the, Dory, can you get a vote?
Yes, I'm so sorry. Um, Birgit Bogler?
Yes.
Jeanette Burke?
Yes.
Ron Day?
Yes.
Celeste Luciano?
Yes.
Ernie Reigstad?
Yes.
Councilman Mark Scott?
Mark voting is in speculation.
Brian Zimmerman?
Yes.
Uh, Joan Furman?
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Robert Otto?
Yes.
And we also put forth a, a motion to, um, Lindsay's been working on all of this for the background study in the land use element, but at least formalize that as well.
Second.
All right. So just for discussion, I, I'm trying to, what's the difference? She's been approved to do the master plan. She's been approved to do the master plan, and so what is the, if we can just clarify for the motion?
Maybe we don't need it, I don't know. I'll go to Dory.
I don't think you need it because it's all part of the same document, part of the same proposal, so I think one vote should suffice.
I, I agree with Dory, I believe she's in, she's been appointed already.
Okay, thank you. I'll clarify.
Okay, Rob, the next thing, we, we already proved the resolutions, now you're.
Open to the public?
Open to the public.
Anyone else?
Anyone from the public wish they'd be heard?
Jenny Derrick's tapping to Sparta, returning to your discussion about the cannabis referral. The misnomer is cannabis because anything that's legal is cannabis, anything illegal is marijuana. I believe the direction was THC-based products, I don't have the letter, but that would be more accurate.
Cannabinoid.
Cannabinoid, and that, are you not going to discuss paraphernalia? The sale of drug paraphernalia in a smoke shop, which seemed to be part of the conversation. I don't know if that doesn't fall within your purview, but that.
Those are good, the, it says products and that could, but that's a good clarification that we can put into the mayor and council. That's a good.
We did discuss that last time.
Yeah, you brought it up.
It does say products, so that we'll make sure that it's. If that's okay with the.
Paraphernalia does have, the police have a very, Ernie, police have an understanding of what drug paraphernalia is, so, a classification. And then just one other quick clarifier, according to Chief McCarrick, any product that is now being sold that has a cannabin, cannabis, cannabinoid, THC, or other hallucinogenic type of infusion or any format is illegal, whether it's in, in a liquor store or the seven eleven or wherever you're gonna buy.
Thank you.
Hi, Sean Sokol, Grove Terrace, I also own eighty-five Main Street. And my, I'm just here to put in good word for my new tenant and the existing Gulf Oil sign that is, I've been on the property for over fifty years. And I had it restored when I first bought the building and it is in perfect condition.
Excuse me, sir, could you, I'm, I'm having a hard time here, could you maybe adjust my clip?
Sure, I'm sorry. And I'm just saying that the sign, I can believe, complements the building and adds to its value. It's been there for over fifty years, like I said, I mean, way longer. And I think it adds to the property value. And I'm just here to put in good word for that and respectfully ask the committee approval or to consider approval on the ongoing and continued use of the sign for the building while the business occupying the building changes for my new tenant.
And so just to clarify that, that.
So it's the same, same for same or?
Yeah, I missed, so the sign you're talking about, I couldn't hear it in the beginning, so.
It is the original tall freestanding Gulf sign, Gulf Oil.
It's that cranky noodle.
Original gas station.
Cranky noodles, right?
Correct.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so, so we're gonna be preparing, we made a determination at the subcommittee prior to this meeting. So we're gonna be preparing a memo, so your concern is just for the pre-existing porcelain lollipop sign that's, that defines the Gulf Oil station, which it looked like from the application. Your intent is to change the youth but preserve the aesthetic in a historic manner.
Exactly, it would just be a, a.
You need a vinyl, vinyl wrap on the porcelain sign, yep.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Rob Lee Cle, Sparta, I'm sure you have my, my letter. And I wanted to discuss that this is not about cannabis.
Can you speak a little louder?
Sure. This is not about cannabis, this is about process. This is about the council's failure to adhere to MLUL law, specifically forty fifty-five D dash twenty-six on referral powers. The language is clear as day and the town council did not come even remotely close to meeting its duties and addressing the planning board's letter. I started paying more attention to town issues after reading about a proposed trucking terminal in Sparta forty-five years ago in the local paper and how a project like this, so large in scope and size, had developed and progressed, was difficult to understand and beyond everyone's grasp, that the residents were literally blindsided by this. Now we have numerous people who can chime in and blame some former council members or town professionals who are not forthcoming about the developments that may have led to the subsequent litigation, but that's for a different time and place, which really, really the issue was my outrage was about the process and how we got to that point. In this process, ordinance twenty-five oh seven, the planning board was ignored. And one council person made a unilateral decision by not having the contents of the planning board letter discussed and having the council vote on those issues raised in a letter. The response, discussion, vote from the town council on that letter and its contents wasn't permissive, it was mandatory. The language is very clear, and does anyone disagree about that? Anyone?
Mr. But, I'm gonna advise the board not to make comment.
That's probably.
But the, you, you have the floor.
Now, this isn't a finger pointing exercise, this is an opportunity for the planning board to address the town council and have them address the letter and follow, follow MLUL protocol. The zoning board and planning board are well-versed in avoiding the appearance of being arbitrary and capricious when considering the merits of applications. The town council, in similar fashion, cannot be arbitrary and capricious in the process of passing ordinances. They cannot adhere to forty fifty-five D dash twenty-six when it's convenient and ignore it when it's inconvenient. The planning board is supposed to be autonomous, guided by a professional planner, land use attorney, and operate with undue influence from other entities. By not following through in your letter to the council, you are essentially complicit. You know it's wrong, you waited for them to correct it, and it's clear it's not their intention. The wait-and-see approach has not worked. The planning board serves Sparta, not the town council. It's time to put aside the pettiness and let everyone do their jobs. As someone recently pointed out to me, everyone's so afraid of losing their job that they're not doing their job. Doing the job shouldn't rock the boat, it should steady it, and I thank you for your attention.
Anyone else from the public? Just I don't, seeing no one else, there should be a motion to close to the public?
I'll make the motion to close to the public.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Record shows none. Okay, next, Rob, what do we got next?
Do we wanna do expenditures?
All right, so you know, we, we had that notice Joan had put in case we had to go into closed session on the discussion. I was comfortable that we had the discussion of the recommendation in public. I have nothing else for closed session, so if there's nothing else that needs to be discussed.
Expenditures.
Expenditures, thank you.
I thought I said that, I didn't say it loud enough.
Thank you.
Close session, aren't we going to address Mr. Lee Cle's letter? That was one of the points of.
I, I'm, I'm advising the board that.
No comment.
That he, we make no comment and that his letter is duly filed, he made his statement. In the, if we were to go in cho, complete transparency, if we go into closed session, is the board, I represent the board, is the board going to make a determination to support his position and direct? You could go into closed session on that, you know, there, you could, if the board wants to go into closed session, you have the power to go into closed session based upon that, if someone wanted to do that. Why don't we get through the disbursements first? Dory, what do we have on the agenda on that, expenditures?
Everybody had received, it's a very large packet, I don't know how you wanna go over it.
All right, so if, if you could, if someone would do a motion and second on the package as a whole, if you have something that you wanna have pulled out, you can do that. But I would ask that someone do a motion to approve the vouchers as submitted.
I make a motion that we pay the vouchers as submitted in a timely basis.
I'll second that motion, Rob Otto.
Well, call Dory individually.
I have discussion?
Yes.
Because I've gone through all of these and I just have some questions on them. There are things in here that, some of them belong to escrow. Some of them, like we talked about, and Jim Zep said that the housing element and fair share plan expenditures should be recharacterized into, I'm not exactly sure what, they have another line item for them at the town level, wherever Steve Warner and on and dash are billing, so they should go into that.
We do have a separate line for that.
Okay, so that, that needs to be recharacterized. There was attention to RAMAS, that should go to escrow. I had questions on the appellate matter, both for DCR and both for, well, both for DCR, for the appellate and as well as the federal, and where that money is going to be coded. And I had a story earlier today that the town council just approved two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars extra for legal fees. And I wanted to make sure that some of that was going to be allocated back to the planning board as these orders are increasing, and she assured me that there's a pot up there and, you know, if we run out of it, that we will then, I guess, dig into that pot.
Correct.
I had under Mr. Simmons, I'm sorry, I had some questions there. And I asked Lindsay this last time when you weren't here, the same question, but when you're billing for the meetings, and let's say we have an hour for just our general discussions, and then we have applicant A for an hour, applicant B for an hour, I believe you're billing like the, the three hours just to the town for meeting time? Yes, that, that's what we were asked to do years ago. Okay, so Lindsay was doing something else, so I'm just looking for some consistency here. And if you're spending an hour on a particular applicant, should that not go back, should that go back to the applicant? So that is my question to whomever's doing this, but applicant A would have their hour billed to them, applicant B, because this is all money coming out of the township budget when I believe some of it should be relocated back.
In other words, the developers should be paying.
Exactly, that's the escrow.
Escrow.
So that has not historically been done, so I'm just calling that to your attention.
That's actually incorrect, historically, all escrow goes to escrow. It's all coded like that, if it's on one bill, it doesn't necessarily mean all of that is going to general, that's not how it works. We break that down in our office and we code the invoices when we send them to finance.
All right, so just, I'd suggest for the, well, my understanding is what the professionals are doing is we, we bill a set fee, we have a set fee for attending these hearings. We do not bill the, we do not double dip, we do not bill again the applicant. If we do a resolution or a report that is separate and distinct from the hearing, we bill that individually under that item. So that is the course that I've been following, I think that's the course, the other professionals. But feel comfortable, Joan, there's no double dipping on it, and it is.
No, I didn't mean.
But it is, it is addressed to the escrow.
That's what I just wanted to make sure, because it's, you know, we're just looking at what was submitted to us. And it's saying, you know, for three hours for the meeting, we're on some of those dates, we heard different applicants and that it should be, I think, escrowed back to the applicants, I think it's a missed opportunity.
So what you, what you're saying, Dory, is that internally.
We code everything, it goes to the appropriate line, we do that, that's what we do.
Professionals, they just do the flat, three hours, and then you break it up in an hour.
Yeah, we could also get an invoice that might have federal DCR, appellate DCR, it could also have affordable housing. Then each invoice gets a different code for each line. So what you're seeing is just, we're not gonna make three different copies and white it out and give you what's appropriate, that's just how it's billed.
So the expenditure, the expenditures that we see are prior to the recharacterization.
That is correct.
Okay.
And we do that, we code it.
Yeah.
We code everything and we put it to the appropriate account.
And the recharacterization reduces the amount that is the town's responsibility as it becomes the developer's responsibility.
Correct, we break that down, we break down what is escrow, what is for an application and what has no bearing on an application whatsoever, we make that determination. And we work with our professionals if we ever have questions as well. That's what we do in-house internally.
Okay, but while they're here for the three hours, you break it down, it's not.
No, because they're here for a meeting, for, that's for the planning board, that comes out of our general, they're here for the township. They're here on behalf of the township, their time here. If they do work for an application, say it's a, a review, Mr. Simmons or, or Ms. Knight does an application review or emails going back and forth that require, and, and some research or, I don't know, give me some more examples, or reaching out.
Review, need reviews.
Outside agencies, things of those, that nature, then it gets billed to the applicant.
So I think what Joan is asking, maybe we're not hearing is, so when we see like a presentation and we ask our professionals clarification questions during our review, that's not coming out of escrow, that's coming from their.
Coming out of the township's general, because they're here for us.
They're here for, they're here, right, they're here for our review of the application.
That is correct.
Is what.
Isn't it the, isn't it the developer's responsibility to pay?
All right, so if I could, Mark, normally if it was a special meeting, that's identified to that particular applicant, it is not uncommon throughout the state that the attendance, because it becomes difficult, you got multiple applications, it was an hour here, hour and a half there, so it's not uncommon that we get a set fee. Now, in all candor, it is a set fee, so when some of the meetings go to ten, eleven o'clock, that, we have to absorb that. So that's the give and take.
So the Board of Education is not gonna be billed for Mr. Simmons' time tonight.
He will be billed for the report, and let's say I do a resolution, billed for that. Now, a lot of time, the Board of Education asks for a waiver because they're a governmental entity and it comes out of general.
Let's say it was developer A.
Let's say it was developer A, they would pay all expenses except for the attendance at the hearing, except if there's a special hearing that they've requested, and then they pay individually. They pay for everything then, because they ask for the special hearing outside of your normal course.
That seems to be an excess burden on the town then.
It's common, it's, again, because we're at a set fee, it's fair, a lot of times the applicant is a taxpayer, is a, they're all taxpayers, but it, it's a give and take, Mark. Could we, could you say again, if it was two applications and my fee is X dollars an hour and then you just divide it up there, you could, that's unusual, because it's, it's, every application, we're here for the hearing on behalf of the board at that hearing, could you do what you're saying? Yes, it puts a lot of burden on the professionals and the land use department to break that up on a meeting. The other issue's easy, when Dave does a report, Lindsay or I do a resolution, it's easy identified. Could you save a couple bucks? Probably yes, answer the question.
And in the process makes Sparta even less business friendly?
Well, but I think the counterpoint to that would be, we could also work on things like design standards and suggest ordinance changes to the governing body would be the counterpoint to that, which if those changes were made, then every application wouldn't be treated in like a bespoke way, it could be, you know, hey, here's some updated language from forty-five years ago and now we can quickly make determination, so it actually might be more business friendly. But we can't make that determination, we can't make that recommendation because we don't have the time and we also don't have the charge to do that.
I, I bill the escrow accounts when I come to a meeting.
That's what you said last time, that's why I'm asking, because it.
That's typically how I do it in the other municipalities I represent as well. I bill directly, for, say we heard an applicant for forty-five minutes, I will bill forty-five minutes to that. And then where I bill the township is when, for example, tonight, like say, obviously tonight's a unique situation with it was a capital improvement plan, so they don't have an escrow. But if that was an applicant, that hour, hour and a half that we spent on that application, I would bill to that escrow account and the remainder of the meeting, I would bill to the. And the remainder of the meeting, I would bill to the township. So say tonight I would bill, I wrote it down, it would be like an hour and a half for that first part. And then we've now been here an hour discussing various items, that hour would be billed to the township.
Unlike my retainer says, I get a set fee.
You have a set fee, they do not.
They negotiated a better deal.
So is there, is there an opportu, like Mr. Simmons, how do you, do you do it like Lindsay or do you do?
Well, he's due opposite, so that's why I'm pointing out the inconsistencies here.
When we started here years ago, we were advised to bill just the meeting.
Oh yeah, this is not against you at all.
Oh no, I understand, I understand.
Still getting paid.
Quite frankly, in some towns, if we were here for three hours and the first hour was with developer A and he was an hour, we'd bill an hour to developer A. If we were the applicant B for a half hour, half hour time goes to developer B and the other hour and a half would go to the township.
Yeah, there's nothing in our ordinances which is saying how to do it, but it is inconsistent.
Is there any way that we could, is this something we can make a motion on to at least get Simmons?
What I would say in all candor is we're in August, I have a contract that goes through the year, so this is something we should look at.
I'm not talking about yours, I'm just talking about.
And all of us, I mean, they have contracts too.
Yeah, yeah.
So I would say we should look at this next year when the issue comes up of the engagement. We could clarify or you could have a discussion of that. Yes, you could change, I just wouldn't change it this year. Again, if you look, the towns that, days of old, before Chris Christie, the attorneys used to be able to be part of the pension. And we would get a retainer for the year. So let's say I got $12,000, I get $1,000 a month, whether there was a meeting or not, and I was part of the pension. That is more common, that is no longer, that, that process is no longer available, it's in fact disfavored. I think when you give medical to the professionals, it affects your bonding capacity and I'm going a little off the rails, but the new world is you can do a set fee, non-pensionable, or you can do an hourly, or you can do a combination of it.
Well, they're both hourly, but shouldn't it be consistent in what we do, so applicant A will get billed by the planner, not by the engineer?
They probably all think the planner is so expensive.
So I can't.
It'd be a board question, I guess.
Yeah, I think we should look into it, I think that should be put on discussion, maybe a subcommittee looking at it. Dory's department can look at what other jurisdictions are doing. I could combine Dory with other and then maybe we could make an informed decision.
But here's a question, so that sounds costly, so it sounds like Lindsay's already doing what? So, and it sounds like Mr. Simmons has done it? Is it so unreasonable just to suggest for, I mean, Dory, would that be a problem if?
Like that's, it depends on number one, how the contract is written and number two, it depends on what Mr. Simmons' office would like to do, it could be a lot of work.
We could do it either way, I'll make more money on an hourly.
We're not talking about you. You're just, you're just.
I say it's not very profitable at this point.
No, I'm, I'm just, we get it, but, but the end. But for the planner and the engineer.
What goes back to the developer.
So if, if, right, so if Lindsay has already identified how many hours she's represented developer A, B, and C, then it seems like Dave Simmons could agree and charge accordingly and we could.
With others.
So.
Quite frankly, when I go into the office tomorrow, I'll log on to my computer and instead of whatever the project code is for Sparta Township Planning Board, three hours or whatever it was, developer A put their project number in, an hour, developer B, half hour.
So I would make.
Township, hour and a half.
So it sounds easy, so I would, I mean, unless accounting tells you otherwise, I would like to make a motion that we simply change how, if I can make a motion, I don't know if this, if we simply change so that Dave Simmons is conforming with how Lindsay does it, which I think is a more transparent and taxpayer-friendly way of doing it.
I think we need to make sure that there's nothing in Dave's contract that's contrary to that before we make that decision. I, I would like to know how his contract is worded before we just kind of start making changes.
He's getting paid either way.
No, I, I understand that, but.
If I may make a suggestion.
Sure.
But what Celeste just mentioned, I think is something that should be checked first and also just thinking out loud. If the board is going to change how they want us to do it, I think we've got to be in lockstep with the zoning board too. Because when we go to the zoning board, we do it the same way, if I'm there for two hours, I build a zoning board for two hours. We don't divvy it up between that, I think it should be consistent is what I'm getting at.
Well, but how, Lindsay, how, I mean, how's that work in zoning, how's the planning?
I do it the same way.
Yeah, so I mean, it's already inconsistent, but okay.
So, and, and that.
But I just think the two boards should talk to each other to make sure.
I have another quick question.
So this is a spending thing and I think this is something that should be decided at the town council level.
Mine might be slightly different as well, because I don't review every application at the zoning board, I only review deviations. So there might be some kind of different language or some kind of.
Okay, so then Mark, I heard Mark wants to bring it to town council to look at it.
I agree with Mark, I think it's something for the council to look at.
Okay, well.
So can I make a motion to make a.
So we already have a motion to pay the bills.
There's a motion out there to pay the bills.
Well, I want, but next I want to make a recommendation, right?
Okay, right.
All right.
All right, so Mark made the motion and Rob made the second, correct?
I think I did. Yes.
Doesn't matter.
Birgit?
Yes.
Janette, Ron Day.
Yes.
Celeste Luciano.
Yes.
And me, right, yes.
Yes.
Councilman Mark Scott.
Yes.
Brian Zimmerman.
Yes.
Joan Furman.
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Rob Otto.
Yes.
All right, Rob, what else we got?
So, so just to go back, I wanted to make a motion to, was it to make a suggestion or to basically elevate this to the governing body, that we take a look and see since it is spending and since every dollar matters, we could see if the governing body would be willing to request that the engineer follows how Lindsay has been charging against.
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
Because I think that, that additional billing obviously also impacts how escrow is calculated. So I think that that should be looked at as well, because if it turns out that, you know, like all the hours that weren't being billed to escrow now are being billed to escrow, now escrow is depleted before they even get here, that, that becomes, that becomes an issue. So I think they need to also look at how, how escrow is calculated.
So, so Dory, can you take a look at that with your office, because you are, you set up the escrow, right?
It's not something that's going to happen overnight, I'll tell you that.
That's fine.
I'm going to have to research and look.
Two days.
Dory.
I actually, I just recently put together an escrow comparison chart for a bunch of different municipalities I can send to you.
That would be fantastic, thank you.
Because a couple of municipalities are doing the same thing about escrows.
Perfect, thank you. Ken, my question to you real quick is that if it goes to the governing body, it's really, isn't it a board decision between planning board and zoning board, how the contracts are written?
Good point, I am engaged and the professionals, you vote for my engagement. My contract is signed by the chairperson of the planning board and the budgeting, as Dory does, is approved by the mayor and council. So if my, I get $300, let's say, at a meeting or whatever the number is, 600, whatever the number is. The, that number is budgeted, so I am protected that I'll get paid. If, if the, and the mayor and council approve that in their budget. So what the concern becomes is if I exceed my budget in the line item and Dory says there's no more money in that account, I have to get approval by the mayor and council to give additional funds. So we're very good here, we don't have any violations, we're living within our four corners. But the question that came up is, should the applicant be paying more of the professional fees individually? The planner is already doing that, quite frankly, Dave and I could do that also. Next year, if that's what you do, I would put that in my contract, hopefully you'll reappoint me. And that I would say then it would be hourly on the meetings, not a set fee. Now, again, some other municipalities may give $12,000 a year and if you have a meeting or you don't have a meeting, the attorney still gets that amount or the board, because that's an attendance fee. So there's different mechanisms and I think that's what Lindsay was saying, that she's done a survey on what some other jurisdictions are doing.
And so if we're going through this effort, does it make sense to also apply the same to the subcommittee? Where I think currently applicants pay $50, but if it's a particularly complex application where we can save the applicant money by sending them through the minor site plan subcommittee pathway versus having them appear before the entire planning board, do we want to, could we also take a look at that and just see if that is an escrow type thing or is that just a whole other can of worms?
That is something, in my opinion, you can recommend as a planning board, expenditures or funds of the mayor and council.
Okay.
However, Dave's contract, I think, as you pointed out, is with the planning board and, you know, we signed it, so it doesn't have to match what the zoning board does.
No, and I know we did sign a different contract with the zoning board. I guess what I was really trying to say is, if you had developer A and for whatever reason, he had an application that came before the planning board and let's say he had another application, same person, and went to the zoning board for a matter. I was just trying to avoid developer A saying, well, how come I had to pay escrow here at the planning board but not at the zoning board? That's what I was trying to say.
Keep her to go to zoning, yeah.
We'll do it either way you want, it's not a problem.
What do you want to do?
I think we leave it for, leave it for a discussion for the next meeting, you know?
Well, let's look at the contract.
Okay.
All right, so the suggestion is Lindsay has her little survey, they will put that in the package and we'll keep this topic on for next meeting. Is that acceptable to everyone?
Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
But Dorian, is that good?
Yes.
Okay. Bob, Rob, I think that's, that's it.
Anyone else have anything?
Yeah, I just want to apologize to the planning board here, because I didn't really do a very good job the other day trying to get the, the funds for the, for the minor site plan.
Well, for the whole board's design.
For the whole design, for, for the whole board's design standards at the town council meeting. So I, I think it's very important that, that we do align and, and make the design standards more consistent in our, in our overall land use section and, and that would be very developer friendly. Because right now, many things are referred to in, in many different sections and it's rather confusing to our, our potential customers.
Well, since you've brought it up, developer friendly, business friendly, all of that. So can I just, I'd like to ask the master plan subcommittee, presumably you're updating a 45-year-old plan. Presumably, I don't know, I saw there was a figure that was presented by the mayor for updating design standards. But if the intent were to try to work on updating these to make them more clear for business owners so that we can increase our ratables, so we can make the process faster. Haven't we already budgeted for that, isn't that a key component of the master plan?
It is.
From, yeah, so.
It's just a matter of using the funds now rather than waiting and I think you did a very good job of trying to bring it up and had a motion on the floor. Just to piggyback what you're saying too, it's, there are seven separate ordinances when somebody needs to go look at a sign. Think about that, seven different ordinances, so you're a business person out there trying to navigate that, it's almost impossible. We put together a form in the beginning of the year to say, well, if you're, if you're in this zone, you look at here, but then you also have to go here and then you have to go there. And in some cases it is, you know, just following three or four different ones. So all, you know, we were suggesting was bringing them together so that it is in one place, we're talking design standards, not, which are for signs for minor site plan subcommittee. So if you want, I could give you the breakout for the seven different ordinances, in fact, I have them.
So, um, so I would like to add this just as a topic of discussion along with the costing, is if we're trying to actually get something done, rather than the, the figure that I saw in, in that memo, Dory, was that from your office, that number? Do you know what I mean? That the, the mayor provided a figure.
The mayor indicated it would be, that I was trying to spend $100,000 of the taxpayers' money.
Are we talking about the design standards?
Yeah.
I get something from my office for design standards.
What's that?
That didn't come from my office.
Okay, so, so just because we had the planner here and because they're flat rate.
No, that's not our planner, I don't know where he came up with that number.
Huh?
We don't know where he came.
We don't know where he came up with that number.
Right, no, so I'm saying, we have our engineer here, we have a planner here, we have planning and zone, we have the zoning officer here. I'm just curious, I'm not holding anyone to it, but if we're trying to move forward with things, it seems to me we've already allocated monies or we will be allocating monies to complete the master plan. It sounds like that's an 18-month process. I think Birgit got a good sense of maybe, maybe not, I don't want to speak for her, but that the business owners and the, the code and the ordinance supporting them aren't always the most clear. So if we were to try to relax those standards, is, is that something we could do when we're here for a regularly scheduled meeting? If we have a light day and there's a flat rate? I mean, I think, Ron, isn't that something that you undertook in, when you were chair? Where you tried to move forward ordinances, just trying to move the needle?
Celeste was chair and myself, we, we had a sub, subcommittee and the process that looked at ordinances. And the process that we followed there was say, here's what we want to do and here's how much we think it costs and then go get that budget approved. Now, when I, when I hear, I'm going to go a little bit longer than I should, when I hear we want to do all the design standards, I don't think we do.
No.
I, I think if it's just signs, then maybe we look at what would it cost to clean up the signage aspect of the design standards. And then, and then we give that to the town council and, and they decide, you know, hey, I've got, I can only spend so much this year.
Yeah.
Is that, is that there or not, let them make that decision, so we can make the recommendation. And so, so the process was exactly that.
All right, so I mean, I.
Come up with a recommendation and an estimate and get, go get budget for it.
I'm trying to take advantage of, while, while, while I'm here. I want to just pack up and leave, so.
You got 10 minutes.
Yeah, no, I don't need 10 minutes, so it just sounds like, so Ron, is that something that, and Celeste, I mean, you're familiar with, we're trying to move the needle and stuff, Brian, you have good ideas for minor site plan, we could just push through some stuff. I guess it's a question for, for Lindsay and Dave as far as if we did a lot of the legwork and.
We do a draft.
And, and we do a draft.
Right, so then, then you would need a quote from, from each of them to determine how much time they would need to review it and that quote comes back and that gets presented for.
No, I understand that, I'm just saying, so if, if, if we were able to do the majority with pre-existing stuff that's already MLUL compliant, whether borrowed from another town or stuff that already exists in the code and we just try to clarify it, certainly they're not going to be able to give me a figure right now, we'd have to present it to them. But I guess for Mr. Poro, is that like a track we could take? And, and for Dave and Lindsay, is that something you'd be willing to do, is kind of fast-track some of these pain points that we've identified from the front lines and minor site plan subcommittee applications?
Well, if we look at what I put in your package on your powers, 40 column 55D dash 25.
Data collection?
Subsection B, subsection B talks about one, two, and three. Number two is assemble data on a continuing basis as part of a continuing planning process, so you have that power.
All right.
Number three, perform such advisory duties as are assigned to it by ordinance or resolution of the governing body. So we had the, the mayor and council ask us to look into that cannabis as we did today. And again, maybe I spent an hour and a half, two hours max on that, so it's within the general budget. I don't think that we need, if the information is done by a subcommittee or members that make a suggestion and it is placed before me to review or the board engineer or planner to the review, that's nominal and I don't think you need a separate. And I don't think you need a separate proposal. And I think that's what you're saying with the signs. If you have some other jurisdictions and you have a proposal under your advisory duties. We can review it on two hours, three hours on on my end, on the engineers. We're not talking a lot of money. You vote on it. Yes, it goes to the mayor and council. So under the powers, I think you have the right to do that. And as long as it's something that your committee or subcommittee is doing the first draft, I think we can very much keep it within budget.
Thank you. So last thing, would Dory, if if we were to undertake that. Your office probably doesn't have the time, but you would probably also want to weigh in it, weigh in on it. Would you prior? Would you prefer to weigh in on it? After we do a draft and prior to submitting to professionals? Or would you like to weigh in it after the professionals if we were to do this?
Either way, as long as I get to weigh in.
As long as you get a say. Alright, okay.
You're chair, why don't you point four people?
Power. Does anyone want to undertake? An effort to take a look at these pain point design standards specific? Okay, so Celeste is one. I will do it. Alright, Birgit will do it.
I think it should be people who really understand the standards and the pain points that we've gone through.
Lately, alright, well, can I start with alright, can I start with minor site plan subcommittee? Since we've been dealing with some complicated application application. So Brian, would you be willing to do it?
Yes, I will do it.
Ron, I know you were you got away from it.
I to be honest, I just don't have the time.
Okay, that's fine. Joan?
Sure.
Okay, I'll do it. You want to include so Celeste, you're still.
Form, so how many?
Oh, yeah.
You need four.
We have three. Alright, so I prefer Birgit, if you're okay, I prefer Celeste for now and then we can swap out just because you're new to this.
I think a good way to learn is for me to see what's going on. If he wants it.
Alright, you guys decide.
I'm not saying, no, 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 no.
I'm already on so many committees.
I think it's not. It's not bad to have people that are familiar with it and then maybe to have one person that's going to look at it from the outside.
Right, because if you can explain it to me in a way that makes sense.
Okay.
I'm.
So Celeste, are you okay?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so Birgit, you'll be the fourth?
Yeah.
Alright, alright, so I don't know what we call it. Does anyone have a name?
Well, it's just an extension of the minor site plan subcommittee because that's that's what you're charged to do.
Yeah, because they're all on subcommittee. Alright, so it's going to be a design standard sub subcommittee. With that, anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
Actually.
It's your discretion.
You're the chair.
You're the chair.
Subcommittee.
Thinking now, this is just going to be another subcommittee, so we already have minor site plan. If it's another subcommittee, I'm gonna not do it. It's going to be too much time, so.
So you're out?
I'm out.
I will help if if you don't, if you need the extra assistance.
Alright, I don't know when we're going to meet, but I'd like to just. Put something together, I guess, for the next meeting so we could kind of.
So just so for the record, you have you've created a subcommittee on design standards. Again, to make recommendation, you have the four people. And then a subcommittee was created by the acting chair, Robert Otto.
And it's not all design standards.
It's specific to the pain points.
Specific to signs, right?
It's specific to the pain points encounter on minor site plan subcommittee. So it would be great for Birgit to get up to speed and it'll be good for you, Celeste, because I think you.
No problem.
As clarified. And I I think it's proper. Is the board in favor of that as a whole or all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? So the records show it was unanimous. Thank you.
Thanks. Alright. Anyone else have anything?
Yeah, I just want to make one statement because I in the mayor's letter to to the planning board. He indicated that I was pushing or urging the Lake Mohawk Board. To approve bed and breakfasts in the historic zone of which which it was already. I am the I I purchased with my wife. Nine West Shore Trail. It's been a blighted property for about forty years. And I wanted to do something to help the town. I really don't have a big profit motive and I and it was not my intent to in any way, shape or form to. To sway or or I just wanted to get it out there that, you know, we did this because we wanted to do something good for the town. I have no idea what use will come down. I I seem to have turned it over to God to let to let it let let's see what happens with this zone. Does it stay TCC or does it go to C one H? So whatever comes out, whatever happens, happens. Until then, the property unfortunately will remain a blighted property and it will continue to be the way it is. So I just want to make that clear that I have no. I had no profit motive whatsoever. In fact, I I didn't buy this property for profit motive. I did it and we did it to do something good for the community, good for Lake Mohawk, good for this town. Thank you.
And and to be fair, that purchase, when was that?
July first.
Alright, so C one H came up, so so.
That July first of this year?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So just to be fair, since we're going on the record, C one H again came out of several applications that were difficult. With design standards and they were a little bit unclear. And that came out early in the year when I first started. So it, you know, just want to make it clear that had nothing to do the the desire. I don't want C one H, the historic fabric of Lake Mohawk to be caught up in. This this argument.
Right.
Okay.
And then I got caught up in it.
And I was under contract for a year and a half.
Alright, so enough.
So I had nothing to do with the standards.
Alright, so enough said. Alright, so I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
One second.
Thank you.
Hold in favor.